If everybody would please have a seat. I will now call to order the meeting of the Omaha Planning Board. The Planning Board members that are here today are Trenton Maggott, David Roseacher, Michael Pate, Jeff Moore, Patrick Morris, Christine Carnes, Vice Chair, and I am Greg Rosenbaum, Chairman. Members of the city staff that are in attendance today are Dave Fanslaw, Planning Director, Eric England, Acting Assistant Planning Director, Mike Carter, Acting Current Planning Manager, Robert LaRocco, Planning Board Administrator, Jennifer Taylor from the City Law Department, and Lisa Agans, our Recording Secretary. Before we go any further, we're going to have, just take a few minutes. Trenton Maggott, this is his last meeting. He's been on the Board for five years, and I'll turn this over to Eric.
Yeah, just on behalf of City Planning Department, as well as the other city staff that work with this Board, we just want to thank you, Trenton, for your insight, especially dealing with matters on commercial real estate, as well as always a witty personality, I should say.[98.31][98.31](Laughter) But we just wanted to say thank you, and I'll let any other Board member say anything, but we do have a certificate of appreciation to give to you afterwards.
I'll start off. As Chairman, I'd, Trenton, for your five years on here, I noticed when you came on to the Board, the knowledge of what's going on in Omaha. You've got your radio show that talks about everything that's going on, but their knowledge, well, I (laugh), the knowledge that you have, I can remember one Board member that's had that much knowledge. That was RJ Neary, and so you're in good company with knowing what goes on, and I've always appreciated that knowledge, and I've appreciated your sense of humor that you always bring to the pre-meetings. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to say it's been a pleasure getting to know you, working with you, learned a lot from you. There's nobody on the Board that knows more about commercial real estate than you, and that's, that's always been a very...
Especially this guy.[157.19][157.19](Laughter)
He's a close second, how about that? And, yeah, your sense of humor has always, always kept things lighthearted, and I wish you the best in your next endeavor, and thank you for your service to the city.
Thank you.
Well, I'd just basically add to the same comments, you know, it's been fun to work with you alongside you, gaining your insight into the industry, and the knowledge that you have, and of course, your, your sense of humor. I hope to continue that relationship.
It's gonna be pretty boring without me.[190.51][190.51](Laughter)
Never a dull moment, that's what I'll say, and I truly appreciate those times, and look forward to seeing you outside of this, and continuing our friendship. Thank you so much.
I don't have anything to say.[204.12][204.12](Laughter) Trenton and I have known each other for a number of years, well before we've served together on this Board, and one thing I've come to know about Trenton is that he's got the city of Omaha always at its best interest at heart, and done a great job in helping grow the city of Omaha over the years, and your insights, Trenton, have been tremendous. And thanks for your impact to the city of Omaha and everything you've done.
Thank you.
For the community, thank you.
And thank you, Trenton. Been a pleasure to sit next to you for a year and a half. I'm not sure who's gonna talk in my ear while people are presenting up there, but[236.51][236.51](Laughter) you're a great broker, a great Planning Board member, and a good friend too, so thank you.
You all are very kind, and I'll rip out my speech now that you've been so kind. I do appreciate, I want to thank a number of people. Mayor Stothard for putting the trust in me and nominating me for this Board, City Council for approving it. Little did they know what they were getting into. It's been a fast five years. I wish I could've done more. I want to thank Dave Fanslaw, Eric England, the whole staff, Michael Carter, you've all been really great, and I love working with you guys. I'm not leaving the town. I've been in commercial real estate for 25 years. I'll be on the radio for probably another 25 years, so I'm sorry for that. But now I'll be unbridled on what I can say.[292.33][292.33](Laughter) There's been a few times where they've had to harness me a little bit, and we made it through it, and FCC's kept me on the radio, and I don't know who's kept me on this Board, but I appreciate, I appreciate everybody else, and we've got a great city, that there's a lot more growth to be, to be done here, and we appreciate everybody's assistance, and the Planning Department does a wonderful job, and I hope they'll still take my calls after I'm off the Board. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Trenton.[324.13][324.13](Applause) Trenton, would you come on up, please?
So, you know, you guys, without me here, I hope you get picked up for another year on public access TV.[342.03][342.03](Laughter)
Yes, you do. So I'm gonna say the last, I guess, word before Trenton starts his last meeting. Trenton, on behalf of myself and the administration and staff, we appreciate, in all seriousness, we appreciate your service to the city of Omaha. You were always willing to listen to every case that came before you, and we appreciate that. We appreciate your professionalism, your knowledge of the industry. It can be tough to replace on the Board that, that knowledge. Sometimes you talked in languages that I'm not sure any of us understood, except for maybe Patrick, when Patrick came on Board. But in all seriousness, we appreciate your service. It's not, you know, the easiest Board to serve on. It's a very important Board. We take it very seriously because it's our, it's our passion, it's our livelihood, and again, we just appreciate your professionalism for the last five years, and appreciate your friendship as well.
Thank you. I think what he's saying is begging me not to take every case off the consent agenda[439.00][439.00](Laughter) so, to make it last. Thanks, everybody.
Okay, we'll proceed with the meeting. Our rules of procedure are as follows. Notice of this hearing has been published. Copies of today's agenda are located on the table in front of us down here. You are welcome to come down and pick one up. The cases on the consent agenda will be heard first. Consent cases are perceived by the Planning Board to be non-controversial, have already been heard, or been recommended for layover, and therefore will be read and voted on without the opportunity for your testimony. If you wish to testify, you may remove the case from the consent agenda. When each consent case is read, I will ask if anyone wants the case removed. If you do, please stand up and say so, and the case will be removed. This case will then be heard in the order in which it appears on the regular agenda after we go through the consent cases. When the case is heard, you will have the opportunity to come to the podium, clearly state your name and address, and give your testimony at that time. When hearing cases on the regular agenda, the Board will first hear from the applicant. After the applicant states their case, we will hear from the proponents, and then we will hear from the opponents. After both sides are heard, the public hearing will be closed, and no additional testimony will be permitted unless a Board member requests additional information. When at the podium, please clearly state your name, address, and whom you are representing for the record. Your testimony is very important to us. In the interest of time and courtesy to others, please be short and to the point. We will try to limit each case to 10 minutes. Those directly involved in the, in the case, please speak first. We request that large groups select a spokesperson to represent that group, therefore eliminating repetitive testimony. When giving testimony, please provide new information and try not to repeat what is previously said. We do ask that all speakers and others be treated with courtesy and with respect. In that regard, please remain silent while seated, and please turn off your cell phones. Our decision to approve, deny, or continue a case made here today will be forwarded to the City Council for another public hearing and final disposition by the City Council. Conditional use permits are an exception to this rule. The Board's decision made here today on conditional use permits are final and not forwarded to the City Council. Lastly, upon the advice of the Law Department, all communications to the Board members from attorneys or other interested parties should be transmitted through the Planning Department so that they are made a part of the public record. The Department will then transmit all that information to the Board as well as to the rest of the public. Rezoning matters are an exception to this rule. A current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act can be found in a white binder on the east wall of this room. The only change, I believe, is we added, to the consent agendas, we added Agenda Item Number Eight as a layover on this, and, but I think it's in all the new ones that are up. So, with that being said, I'll get started with the consent cases. Agenda Item Number Five, Case C-10-19-170, C-12-19-171. Applicant: Metropolitan Community College Area. It is on for approval. Request: Preliminary and final plat approval of MCC CIO addition, a minor plat inside-city limits with rezoning from GO and HI to GO and HI. Location: Southeast of Edward Babe Gomez Avenue and 33rd Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed from the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none. Agenda Item Number Six, Case C-10-19-172, C-12-19-173. Applicant: Keywood Infrastructure Company. It is on for approval. Request: Preliminary and final plat approval of Builders District Two, a minor plat inside-city limits with rezoning from DS to CBD. Property is located within an ACI overlay district. Location: West of 16th and Burt Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed from consent? I thought there might be. That will be removed. Agenda Item Number Seven, Case C-12-19-175. Applicant: Sage Capital Real Estate Investments. It is on for approval. The request: Preliminary and final plat approval of DeMille, a minor plat inside-city limits. Location: 6152 Military Ave. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda Item Number Eight, Case C-10-19-176, C-12-19-177. Applicant: Lanahaw Pacific Inc., care of David Lanahaw. It is on for layover. Request: Preliminary plat approval of Blue Sage Creek Two, a subdivision outside-city limits with rezoning from AG and R4 to R4. Location: Northeast of 213th and F Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda Item Number Ten, Case C-12-19-179. Applicant: Dan Stoller. It is on for layover. The request: Preliminary and final plat approval of Alcorn Ridge Estates Replat Two, a minor plat inside-city limits. Location: 20033 Alcorn Ridge Drive. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda Item Number Eleven, Case C-10-19-189. Applicant: Joel Nybaum. It is on for approval. Request: Rezoning from R435 and R535 to R5. Location: 4830 Webster Street. Would anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda Item Number Twelve, Case C-10-19-190. Applicant: Ron Hackett. It is on for approval. Request: Rezoning from HI to NBD. Property is located within an ACI One overlay. Location: 1219 Pacific Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda Item Number Thirteen, Case C-10-19-191. Applicant: Chris Snare. It is on for approval. Request: Approval of the MCC Major Commercial Corridor Overlay District. Location: 11900 Pacific Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda Item Number Fourteen, Case C-10-19-192. Applicant: Rebecca Turner. It is on for approval. Request: Rezoning from R7 to LO. Location: 8040 and 8050 Chicago Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed from consent? Seeing none. Agenda Item Number Fifteen, Case C-10-19-195. Applicant: Planning Department on behalf of the city of Omaha. It is on for approval. Request: Rezoning from GC to R5. Location: 2517 Ames Avenue. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda Item Number Sixteen, Case C-10-19-196. Applicant: Planning Department on behalf of the city of Omaha. It is on for approval. Request: Rezoning from GC to R7. Location: 2006 Ohio Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda Item Number Seventeen, Case C-10-19-197. Applicant: Planning Department on behalf of the city of Omaha. It is on for approval. Request: Rezoning from GI to R4. Location: 4807 North 24th Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. It's Agenda Item Number Eighteen, Case C-10-19-198. Applicant: Planning Department on behalf of the city of Omaha. It is on for approval. Rezone, and request rezoning from GC to R7. Location: 3116 North 16th Street. Does anyone wish to have this case removed? Seeing none. Agenda Item Number Nineteen, Case C-10-19-201. Applicant: Daniel Bolt. It is on for approval. Request: Rezoning from GC to NBD. Property is located within the ACI overlay district. Location: 140 South 40th Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. It's Agenda Item Number Twenty, Case C-10-19-187. Applicant: Hector Leguero. Hope I said that right. It's on for approval. Request: Rezoning from GI to NBD. Property is located within an ACI overlay district. Location: 1915 South 13th Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Moving on. Agenda Item Number Twenty-One, Case C-10-19-180. Applicant: Access Bank. It is on for approval. Request: Approval of a PUR planned unit redevelopment along with approval of the MCC Overlay District. Property is located within a Flood Fringe Overlay District. Location: 6405 Center Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda Item Number Twenty-Two, Case C-11-19-182. Applicant: Sage Capital Real Estate Investments. It is on for approval. Request: Approval of a PUR planned unit redevelopment to allow development of multifamily residential. Location: 6152 Military Ave. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda Item Number Twenty-Three, Case C-11-17-265. Applicant: Saddle Creek 1011 LLC. It is on for approval. Request: Approval of a major amendment to the PUR planned unit redevelopment to revise the approved signage. Location: 1011 South Saddle Creek Road. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda Item Number Twenty-Five, Case C-8-19-200. Applicant: Dan Stoller. It is on for layover. Request: Approval of a major amendment to the special use permit assumed to allow outdoor sports and recreation in the DR District. Location: 233 Alcorn Ridge Drive. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Moving on. Agenda Item Number Twenty-Six, Case C-8-19-202. Applicant: James Thibodeau. It is on for approval. Request: Approval of a major amendment to the Large Project Special Use Permit assumed to allow college and university facilities in the GO District. Location: 3003 Edward Babe Gomez Avenue. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda Item Number Twenty-Seven, Case C-7-19-194, C-8-19-159. Applicant: Robert Patterson. It is on for approval. Request: Approval of a special use permit to allow daycare services general in a R4 District. This was laid over from the August 7th meeting, with approval of a parking adjustment for a mixed-use development. Section 55-736. Location: 4768 Q Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda Item Number Twenty-Nine, Case C-7-19-184. I apologize ahead of time. Applicant: Julio Corver Rubius. It is on for approval. Request: Approval of a conditional use permit to allow personal services in the LO District. Location: Southwest of 13th and Polk Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda Item Number Thirty, Case C-7-19-185, C-10-19-199. Applicant: Daryl Icy. It is on for approval. Request: Approval of a conditional use permit to allow warehousing and distribution limited in the CC District with approval of the ACI Overlay District. Location: 11540 West Dodge Road. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda Item Number Thirty-One, Case C-7-05-216. Applicant: Stonebridge Christian Church. It is on for layover. Request: Approval of a major amendment to the conditional use permit to allow religious assembly in the R4 District with a waiver of Section 55-186 Height to allow a 37-foot tall building. Location: 15801 Butler Avenue. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda Item Number Thirty-Two, Case C-7-19-156. Applicant: Fairway Stores Inc. It is on for layover. Request: Approval of a conditional use permit to allow food sales general in the LC District. Location: Northeast of 132nd and Fort Streets. Does anyone wish to have this removed? You do, sir? And finally, Agenda Item Number Thirty-Three, Case C-14-19-193. Applicant: Planning Department on behalf of the city of Omaha. It is on for approval. Request: Vacation of a portion of Pacific Street, east of 6th Street to the dead end abutting Lot 1, City of Omaha, Replat Two addition, and lots 2 through 3, Block 245, Original City of Omaha addition. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, that is it for the consent agenda. I will take a motion.
Do you want to confirm? Since we have a lot of people that don't...
I will, yeah. Do we have a motion for those items on consent for approval?
I move for approval of Agenda Items Five, Seven, Eleven, Twelve, Thirteen, Fourteen, Fifteen, Sixteen, Seventeen, Eighteen, Nineteen, Twenty, Twenty-One, Twenty-Two, Twenty-Three, Twenty-Six, Twenty-Seven, Twenty-Nine, Thirty, and Thirty-Three.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Carnes?
Yes.
Roseacker?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Maggott?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, do we have a motion for those consent items on for layover?
Motion to layover.
Case numbers Eight, Ten, Twenty-Five, and Thirty-One.
Saget?
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Roseacker?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Maggott?
Yes.
Carnes?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Those cases that were on the consent agenda that we just voted on, there will be no further action taken on those cases today. They are done. You are free to stay or free to leave, it's up to you, but those cases have been decided for the day, and no public testimony will happen on any of those cases. I'll wait just a few seconds here for the crowd to clear. Okay, we're gonna get started with case number one. Case number one is administrative meeting only, meaning there will be no opportunity for public testimony. It is Agenda Item Number One, Case C-10-18-275, C-12-18-276. Applicant: Lauren Johnson, Celebrity Homes Omaha. Request: Final plat approval of Lakeview 168, lots 1 through 36, Outlots A through E, a subdivision outside the city limits with rezoning from AG to R4. Location: Northwest of 168th Street and Kansas Avenue. Eric?
Yeah, so this, this first phase final plat for 136 single-family residential lots within 45 acres. The entire development of Lakeview 168 consists of two phases, a total of 265 total lots, but only the 136 is being final-platted with this request. The project is consistent and compliant with the approved preliminary plat, which, which was approved by City Council on January 29th of this year. The resubmital has provided two trail connections from the development to the adjacent Lake Flanagan Trail Network System. One item that will need to be cleaned up before it can proceed to City Council is for the SID boundary to be amended to include the right-of-way of HWS Cleveland. But that being said, staff recommends approval of the rezoning from AG to R4, approval of the final plat subject to the two conditions in the recommendation report prior to City Council.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from the Board?
I move for approval of the...
Rezoning from AG to R4. Approval of the final plat subject to the meeting of the following conditions prior to following the request to City Council. One, the revised SID boundary to show the entire HWS Cleveland Boulevard right-of-way is included in the SID, and two, the submittal of an acceptable final subdivision agreement.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Pate?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Maggott?
Yes.
Carnes?
Yes.
Roseacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay. Moving on. Agenda Item Number Two, Case C-3-19-166. Applicant: Planning Department on behalf of the city of Omaha. Request: Approval of the disposal of city-owned property to an interested party under the Community Development Law. Excuse me. Location: 1814 Sprague Street, 2420 Benny Street, 2428 Bristol Street, 2521 Spencer Street, 2582 Pratt Street, 3809 North 29th Street, 4002 Parker Street, 4021 Parker Street, 4118 North 25th Street. Autumn, are you presenting for the city?
Sure.
Okay.
Autumn Evans, City Planning Staff. We have nine properties selected to transfer to Habitat for Humanity for residential homes. These are all zoned residential, and city staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Any other proponents that wish to speak? Seeing none. Are there any opponents?
Yes.
Okay, come forward, give your name and address, sir.
My name is John Cook. Address: 5304 North 78th Street in Hets, Omaha. I'm an interested party to 1814 Sprague Street. It's a very small lot. I think it's about 40 by 50. I own the adjacent property at 4101 North 19th Street, and actually, 1814 Sprague Street is the backyard of my property. My concern is what could be even built there on such a... My concern is what could be even built there on such a small piece of land at this point with the current codes? And I think I've tried to contact the city several times on purchasing that property to make my lot complete, to bring the backyard back where it was intended to be on its original plot. So I would request that that particular property be removed from this, from the planning department giving it to Habitat.
Sir, is that your primary residence?
No, it's not.
Is it rental property?
Yes.
Okay.
I have a prospective buyer for the property, but not having a backyard, you can virtually from the house to the lot line is four feet, from the back door to the lot line of 1814 Sprague Street.
Okay.
So you have a prospective buyer for just your property or your property and the other property?
Well, they say they'd like to have that other empty lot.
What was the city's response when you reached out to the city about purchasing that?
They told me it wasn't available at the time, and I think I called three or four times.
When was the last time you spoke to them?
Oh, I would say about a year ago. So I really truly believe it's more beneficial to let it become the true backyard of 4101 North 19th.
How'd that work? Could the Habitat for Humanity, could they decide to sell it to somebody once it's given to them?
Sometimes they do, and sometimes they reach out to, and I'm not, I don't work for Habitat for Humanity, so I can't speak for them exactly, but they do reach out to homeowners and purchase homes and their rehab homes. So have you, has Habitat reached out to you at all to purchase your rental property to rehab it?
No.
Hasn't been in negotiations. So since I've been here, I hadn't heard from John, and so if I would have heard from John, I probably would have pulled this one off so we could reevaluate the situation. So it's probably before I got here that you reached out, probably, so.
So if we pulled this off, though, and he doesn't buy it, then it could sit there for a long time, right?
It could, potentially, or we could.
Because we need to, we need to get it appraised?
No.
No?
If we're going to deed to the land bank, no.
Okay.
If we deed it to him, then we would. We could possibly do a side lot disposal, which we'd have to have it approved by City Council to where we could sell it for less than appraised amount.
What's that address?
1814 Sprague Street.
We could do an auction right now.
Autumn, would there be any problems if we were to approve the package today but have further conversations with John regarding that specific property and amending the package before it proceeds to City Council?
That would be fine. Would we proceed with the remaining properties, but just not that one?
I would recommend including the entire package for approval, and we can continue those conversations, and if that one needs to come out before City Council, if that's possible.
Yeah, absolutely. Mm-hmm. We could do that.
John, does that work for you?
Yes, if we can continue the conversation.
Then you and Autumn can exchange information here, so you have someone that you know. She'll give you her information.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Any other opponents that wish to speak? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any additional comments, questions from the board?
Move for approval.
Well, wait a second. We need to hear from them.
And I just want to put on the record, we're making no commitment, John, to dispose of that property to you, but we'll use our best, you know, sit down in our best faith and discuss it and see if it's a possibility, but staff recommends approval.
Okay. Do we have a motion? We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote, please?
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Magid?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Carnes?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Agenda item number three, case C3-19-167. Applicant Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. Request approval of disposal of city-owned property to an interested party under Community Development Law. Location 3315 Franklin Street, 2117 Locust Street, 2201 Locust Street, 2424 Laramore Ave., 2564 Meredith Ave., 2115 Brown Street, 2115 Lake Street, 1915 Willis Ave., 1715 South 19th Street, 1819 Emmett Street, 3324 North 16th Street, 3204 North 16th Street, 5014 North 23rd Street, 3674 Ames Avenue, 3672 Ames Avenue. Autumn, are you presenting again?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Autumn Evans, City of Omaha Planning Staff. We have 15 properties. They're all zoned residential in which the land bank have agreed to accept. As we go through the City of Omaha's inventory, the land bank is a good partner of ours that helps us transfer and sell properties. Some things they've done with lots that we've deeded are, they've sold them for residential construction, side lot programs, which are, which would be a lot that is next to someone that's not necessarily buildable, so they would extend their yard, or possibly community gardens or community outreach. And city staff recommends approval.
Okay, thank you. Any other proponents that wish to speak? Are there any opponents that wish to speak? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Additional comments or questions from the board? Eric, do you want to add?
Recommend approval.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Morris?
Yes.
Magid?
Yes.
Carnes?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Agenda item number four, case C10-19-168, C12-19-169. Applicant Parkway Properties. Request preliminary and final plat approval of Enterprise Industrial Park, a minor plat inside city limits along with rezoning from R4, R5, excuse me, R4, R5, R7, and HI to HI. Location northwest of 13th and Locust Street. May the applicant please come forward.
Good afternoon. Tom Ackley with the law firm at Colley-Jackson, 1125 South 103rd Street, Omaha, Nebraska. We represent Parkway Properties LLC, the applicant here. Also with me today is Mike McIntosh from Lamprey-Nerson. He'll come up and explain the plat and some of the access a little further. And also with me is Ryan Keel from Investors Realty and Tom Egan from Parkway Properties, if there's any questions for those gentlemen. Quick background, picture's worth a thousand words. Basically, Virgil Anderson, over the course of almost 40 years, has acquired approximately 63 different parcels of real estate up in the area north of 13th Street, and it would be immediately east of 16th Street, south of the Ames Avenue area, and of course, obviously west of Carter Lake. But he's had this industrial area. This map that you're seeing on the site here shows the current boundaries. Everything that's in red is what we're asking for, a replat, preliminary plat, and final plat, to create one lot as per the request of the planning department. And in terms of the current zoning, everything you're seeing there that's shaded in tan is currently heavy industrial. And in talking with the planning department about using that site going forward, they requested if we replat that into one lot, that we would also ask for rezoning to get everything consistent. Again, about 95% of the site is currently heavy industrial. The portions where there's just remnants of other plating is up here, looks like an old railroad track line as part of the R4. We've also got some R5, which again is an old rail line, and then there's one lot on the southeast corner, which is R7. So again, 95% of it is heavy industrial, so the rezoning piece is really a change only to about four remnant parcels. The rest of it is consistent with what we have. Terms of the applicant's goal is to bring this property back online into productive use. The plans for the applicant, and basically, is to stage this over the course of three to five years for cleanup, starting on the south and going north. In terms of the cleanup that will occur, and you maybe saw the article in Today's World here, it kind of highlighted some of those things, but initially doing some cleaning and grubbing, lots of trees, underbrush growth on the site, and literally tons and tons of concrete and mounds of concrete. There are piles of concrete out there, some of them that are 40 feet high. In terms of starting from the south, the goal in terms of productive use going forward, this would be a dirt farm area where excavators and others could come in, bring wet soil when they're on a job site, let it dry out, they can gather it back up, go out back to the job site and put it back down. Again, for something that's this close to downtown areas and industrial, very important, it'll be a good, we think, well-used by other businesses. Next area, the grading and staging area. Currently, that's the heaviest accumulation of concrete. The initial goal there is to get the concrete that's there ground up, use the ground concrete onsite for roads and for other purposes, and then also degrade, so we get proper draining on the entire site. As you continue going north, the goal would be a trailer storage area in this location, and next to that, where there's some railroad tracks that could be re-engaged next to active tracks, the goal is to have transportation loading area. So again, we'll have folks that want to store and transload between rail and truck. And then finally, the upper portion of the site, by the way, from 16th Street going down to the bottom of the site, it's 20 to 30 feet. There's quite a drop down from 16th Street, so the portion that's accessible from 16th, that current area has several hundred tons of concrete. It's an old abandoned grain facility. And again, the goal would be to clean up the old concrete that's there, get it ground up, and again, turn that into usable area. So again, timeline-wise, we have no current plans or users for the site. The developer is willing to speculate that this is something we can turn into a productive, active site again for the City of Omaha, and taking the risk of basically having marketing going forward while he's cleaning up and finding users for the site. But we think it'll take a minimum of about three years to go from south to north and hopefully find users along the way that can activate the site. And with that, I guess I would ask Mike McIntosh to come forward if he'd like to speak a little bit towards the access to the site.
Sure. Good afternoon. Mike McIntosh, 14710 West Dodge Road, Lamprey-Nerson. Yeah, I think Tom covered a lot of the specifics. One thing he didn't cover was the access to the site. So currently, Locust Street, there's kind of a gated access right now. It was the old hall road that Virgil had used. That road does go all the way through the site, and so we're proposing to use that southern access off of Locust Street and work that hall road to be able to use that hall road to access the different uses throughout the site. The upper site, which Tom mentioned, is 20 to 30 feet higher up where the old concrete silos were. We do have an access off of 16th Street. There's an existing gated access right there, and then there's another access off of, I believe that's Pratt Street, that gets into that higher site. As Tom mentioned, there's some R7 zoning here. There is, it's 35 to 40 feet of difference in between. There's about a two-to-one slope that's currently heavily vegetated, a lot of illegal dumping going on in that area right now, so the idea is to get some of that cleaned up. So I think, I'm here to answer any other technical questions that you may have on the plat or on the engineering side, but I think that probably covers.
Right now, I don't know if it's increasing my way of thinking, but. Do most of the neighbors, when complete, will the finished elevation be how much higher than the neighborhood, or will it be even with the neighborhood?
No, so we're not planning to change the elevation of the actual site, and that's about 35 to 40 feet below the neighborhood, so it sits well below. There's a two-to-one slope that's heavily vegetated that separates the two.
So they look over it?
They look over the top, yeah.
Okay, and when it's done with those piles ground up, it'll still be that way?
It'll still be that way, correct.
And there's no plans to build structures? It's more of just a land?
At this time, it's a heavy industrial. It's, you know, a contractor brings in wet dirt and farms the dirt, dries it out, takes it off, do trailer storage, do other storage, but that's the plan.
Okay.
And the site's not being used for anything right now? You mentioned there's illegal dumping going on, are they accessing going through that gate, or?
No, I think there might be some empty back lots that they can get into. They're probably backing a pickup truck. I think in the paper, they even talked about some couches that are down on that slope, some old furniture. It's just a, it's an easy way to do it because of all the trees and it's so dense. It's just an easy, and it slopes down so quickly, right?
Are you going to prevent that in the future, then? Are you going to fence it, or are you going to?
Correct, yes. The plan is to do security fencing, monitor it, clean out some of those trees to make it, you know, so it's not as, you know, is more visible, I guess.
Will that be something that operates continually, or will there be set hours on, you know, the operations once that's established?
My understanding is the hours are regular business hours.
Okay.
Yeah, so the eight to five, eight to seven, whatever the regulations are, it would be standard business hours, correct?
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Any other proponents that wish to speak? Come forward, ma'am, and are you a proponent?
I own the land at 1472 Pinky Street.
Come on forward, give your name and address, please, and.
I live at 1472 Pinky, almost 50 years there.
Name?
And my name is Eileen Bowdoin. I'm concerned about what kind of industrial are they putting there? I'm also concerned about, there's a lot of people in that area that has a lot of respiratory problems. How much dust and dirt is going to be coming up over that hill? There's been times where Anderson was putting stuff there. You wash your car today, it was dirty today. You open up your window in your house, dust was all inside your house. I just want to know what are they planning on doing exactly? They're not really saying what are they putting there? And how long it's going to take? And how long are we going to be subjected to this dust and dirt?
I thought they just talked about that, their plan and what they intend to do with that, but we'll bring them up again. If you missed it, I'll bring them up again.
I missed some of it.
We'll bring Tom up again, and he can lay it out for you.
Okay, so it's no big.
Just a second, Tom, we'll, okay. I'm taking, you are an opponent, then.
I'm just a person that lived there and.
Okay.
Because.
All right. I'll ask, are there any other proponents that wish to speak? Wish to opponent. A proponent, okay? You're in favor of this? Okay. Name and address, please.
Hello, my name is Sandra Pedersen, 1466 Locust Street. I had my property for like 26 years. I got it when I was 25, and I remodeled it, restored it, basically. I'm glad they're not going to raise it because the view is spectacular. I do have one question because we have like an abundance of wildlife. I mean, just because of the area. I mean, it's tons, so it's coming from that area. What will be done to like help with that? Because some of those wild birds and animals, they're going to have to go somewhere, so that's just something to think about. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sandra, you live at 14th and Locust, you said?
1466 Locust.
1466. So what's it like, I mean, what's that property like right now, living next to it? I mean, it's not activated, there's nothing going on. Sounds like there's some illegal dumping going on. What's your take as a neighbor?
Well, the neighbors, like, towards the north side, just beautiful. A lot of them have really done well. When you go towards the south side, in between 14th and Locust, right there, that area is really kind of a little bit rundown, and that's where some people dump.
Yeah, this specific property there, that's where they dump it?
Well, you see it. The city comes by and cling up pretty good, close to Locust, but I know when you come from Carter Lake, you can see the areas where they dumped. You can see where basically, it's various different people probably that lived in those properties over the years, where basically they probably dumped stuff over the cliff, okay? And so basically, that's most of where the cleanup will have to take place. But the view is just beautiful, beautiful, so I'm glad they're not going to build higher. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming out.
Any other proponents that wish to speak? Okay, seeing none, are there any opponents that wish to speak? Go ahead, come forward, give your name and address, please.
Robert McGuire, 2884 Martin Avenue. Can we shine the light back on this? I own the property here on Commercial Avenue, 4401 through 4409, about two acres approximately. And yeah, there's a lot of illegal dumping going on there. I spend about $300 a month cleaning this area, every month, it seems like. I finally cut down a bunch of trees and laid them across there, and that stopped people from. from coming in there and dumping. Right down at the bottom of the hill here, there is a trash company, he parks a bunch of his dumpsters down there, and it really just makes it a trashy neighborhood. Just a few blocks up and a few blocks to the east, there is a crime family. What they do is they go through and they, in houses, and they rob all the copper out of them, and they recycle the copper, and then they burn the houses. I know they've done it to two of mine. So I'm very against them parking a bunch of rusty old trailers down at the bottom of this hill, because it's just going to make it worse, and it's going to reduce the value of my property and every other property in this neighborhood, which they're already having a hard time keeping their value up. You know, we're fighting against crime, we're fighting against poverty, and a system that has really just neglected this entire northeast area of Omaha, and I want to build there. But if they're going to park just a bunch of rusty old dumpsters, and which is already, we're getting rid of those, but if they're going to park more trucks down there, and that's all it's going to be is a parking lot for old trucks, they can expect more crime. And I don't want to see that in my neighborhood. I want to improve my neighborhood. Thank you.
Sure.
If, the way it says now, is the property very secure?
Mine?
No, they're...
There's, they have a fence, but there's holes in the fence that they can get through.
So if this gentleman's going to take it and level it, and I understand your concern about old trucks and things like that, but if they provide security and new fencing and, you know, guard it a little bit better, isn't that better than what it is now?
As far as better than what it is now, yeah, but it doesn't help the neighborhood. And this neighborhood really needs a lot of help.
Given what's under this, given what's there now, and it's not, obviously, it's a lot of concrete and unbuildable area.
Sure.
Can you think of another use for it, other than...
Absolutely. See this right here? This is Carter Lake, that's a big, beautiful lake. We could put apartments and condos right there on that hillside overlooking that lake, and it would be one of the most beautiful areas in Omaha if we would stop neglecting it.
What about the area itself, the...
That area, it's right, the only thing between that property and the lake is a road and some electrical wires. Now, you could make apartment complex right there, I mean, they're putting them all over Midtown, West Omaha, they're not putting any in northeast Omaha, but this could be one of the nicest areas in the entire metro area, if somebody would really do it right.
I want to talk to the engineer about the soil conditions, about, my concern is that the landfills, whether you can build on and encapsulate what's there, I don't know if that's feasible anymore, unfortunately. Thank you.
Thank you. House Robert?
Done? Yes.
Okay. Any other opponents that wish to speak?
Stephen Davis, 3211 North 14th Ave. My lot is right about here. And Anderson came through and started tearing down trees a couple of years ago. I went down and stood and was threatened by one of his excavators, trying to stop it so I could get a court order to halt it, because that bank needs to be stabilized. Three houses up from me, they've hauled in 10 to 20 dump truck loads of dirt and concrete to stabilize that bank to their lot line. They were losing their lot. If they come in and take all the trees off of that, that's the only thing that's stabilizing that bank right now. The man said 35, 40 feet, I think he's a little shy on that, but I'm not going to argue with you, because I had to go down a rope to get down there. I'm concerned, my wife has emphysema, we've lived there 40-some years. I'm concerned about, one, the dust. If you're bringing in wet soil, there's going to be no dust, but when you haul out the dry soil, is something going to be done to abate the dust? Also, I've been told that the World Herald said it was going to be a concrete recycling plant. That is extremely noise, noisy, and dusty. What kind of abatement are they going to have for noise and for dust on that concrete plant? I think that'll be further north of where I am, down behind the old grain bins, silos they call them. But I'm just concerned that I want to address those issues, I don't want to have to go out and do massive work to stabilize my bank. Now, I have dumped tree limbs down the bank and brush to stabilize the bank, nothing that's inorganic, nothing that won't decay over time. So if that's a crime, I'm admitting it today. But I think, okay, that's fine. But I did it to try to stabilize that bank, keep it from washing away. Part of my bank was starting to wash, it isn't washing anymore because I've got it stabilized enough. Those are my two concerns. I don't know if I'm an opponent or proponent, but just two concerns that I have.
Thank you, Stephen. Any others, opponents?
Bob Edwards, 1476 Spencer, 3209 North 16, 3207, 3211, 1481 Spencer, and four other properties in the area, last I can remember. My concern is, okay, my concern is the tan area, once the dirt processed or once that's done, what's the intended use for that area? Two, the grinding of concrete, you're going to release heavy metals and silica, could lead to various cancers or lung diseases, so I'm concerned, what mitigation factors, what process or steps can be put in place to suppress that? Because it blows. And three, the only real value of this property is that it's H1 heavy industrial, and I can see why, and it's got that real spirit. Without that real spirit, there'd be no real value to this land at all. So I want to know, they're, they're constructed, they're a concrete prefab company, I talked to the individual, he indicates that he's not going to be building a facility on that site, so as long as that's the case, I don't have a problem with it, but I do have a problem with the concrete, grinding it, what are the mitigation they're going to take to stop that dust from going all over the place, and the dirt, mitigation on that.
Okay. Thank you, Bob. Any other?
I think you bring up some good points. What's your take of that? If the property just sat the way it is right now, would you be satisfied, or?
I wouldn't be satisfied if it sat the way it is right now, but if it sat the way it is right now, at least the contaminants that are on there would not be released because you're not disturbing them. I would like to see that, one, mitigated, it should technically, it's not super fun level, but it's pretty close. I'd like to see it capped, and I'd like to see some sustainable use for it. But if it can't be capped, and if this project is the next best thing, I would like any mitigation factors that can be put in place to prevent health, military health effects or effects to my property, our property, because I've put quite a bit of money, or we have, into those properties, and I'd like to see them sustained.
Great, thank you.
Any other opponents that wish to speak?
My name is Cynthia Coleman, and I'm at 1480 Spencer. I'm the third generation at this house. I have two children, four grandsons, and all of us have some type of allergies. All of us have, our history has cancer in it. My mother just died eight years ago from breast cancer, my grandmother died from breast cancer, and we do not know what type of things that they will be digging up for the neighborhood. I am concerned, as many of my neighbors are concerned, is what's going to happen? You know, maybe I'll die and it'll be passed on to my grandchildren. We have known that cigarettes cause cancer, but in the beginning, they said, oh, nothing's going to happen, nothing's going to happen, and people have died from cigarettes. What are these metals? What are these things are going to cause? Can they guarantee? Probably not. A guarantee saying that they cannot cause any problems with the people in the neighborhood? One gentleman said his wife has emphysema. You know, there's a lot of older people in this neighborhood that have health issues. I'm 61 years old, I have my own health issues, and as I get older, as any one of us gets older, there's things that happen, and we need to protect those that are living in this neighborhood. Thank you.
Any other opponents that wish to speak? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Tom, did you want to come up? We've got a lot of information.
You bet.
For Eileen, go over your operation again for Eileen, and then you've got the wildlife, illegal dumping, trailers, crime, bank stability, dust, air quality, if you can address as many of those as you can.
Absolutely, appreciate the opportunity. First of all, just a reminder, 95% of this site is currently heavy industrial, so any uses that we would be doing, it's currently properly zoned for that. When we came to the planning department to talk about acquisition of the site, it was at the planning department's request that they said, why don't you combine these 63-plus parcels into one lot, and then also, because there is some of this remnant odd zoning in a couple of the corners, why don't you ask for rezoning, so all of it becomes heavy industrial? So again, a lot of the issues that are being expressed, and just as a fact, is currently heavy industrial, and our use is not going to change what it currently is. Having said that, the neighborhood has gotten used to a site that over time has seen a lot of dumping, and has seen a lot of overgrowth, and has seen a lot of trash. So our hope is, with entering this site and beginning the cleanup, you are going to see some dust and some issues as you're grinding concrete, which is not currently there, but it's an allowed use, and within the federal and state guidelines, we are going to have to comply with the air quality requirements. Those requirements are there that we're going to have to comply with. So again, are you going to see more than you're currently seeing because there's not concrete being ground? The answer is yes. On the other hand, are we doing anything illegal or that's going to fall outside of federal or state law? The answer is no. We're going to have to comply with all the rules that deal with that. The longer term, again, three years from now, once the site is cleaned up, the hope would be that with the ground crushed gravel on most of the site, you're going to see less dust as trucks come and go, you're going to see less issues coming and going than you do now. I believe it was Mr. McGuire, one of the comments you had is that we're going to park rusty old trailers down below, and again, we're going to be a detriment to the neighborhood. I think Mr. Magg had tried to indicate, hopefully this would improve the site, and that is certainly our belief as well. We don't know of anybody that's going to come and lease a parcel down here for purposes of parking old dilapidated equipment. Our goal would be that we have active businesses that are doing things for the betterment of Omaha. Again, a transloading facility, a trailer storage facility, things that, again, we're going to have a fenced site, a secure site, and once it's initially cleaned up, should be an improvement for the city of Omaha. Also, I believe, Mr.?
Before you leave, can you just clarify what trailer, what'd you refer to it as, trailer what?
Sure, trailer storage.
Yeah, just clarify what that is for the...
Basically, you have trucks that, as they're transporting goods to and from Omaha, they need temporary places between loads where they can park until they can pick up again. This happens sometimes at large warehouse facilities. If you go down at about 26 and Q Street, obviously FedEx has a huge facility, they're running trucks in and out of there every day, those are their active trucks, but at the extent they have inactive trailers, or they would have trucks that, again, are between maintenance or repairs, it might be a place where they're parking those temporarily while they're, while they're getting ready for reloads or refurbishment. That would be one example.
So basically, there's no long-range storage of trailers there?
Again, at this time, we have absolutely no users or leases lined up. We have a developer that's willing to take the risk of buying approximately 70 acres of land that's split over 63 parcels and does have some environmental issues that has kept others away, but he's willing to, you know, he's looked at this and studied it, talked to the state, and said, we think that over time, if you're cleaning it from south to north, we can overcome the issues that are currently there in terms of the debris and the trash, and again, by minimal disturbance of the ground. And again, I think this goes to Mr. Magg's point, somebody had asked, you know, couldn't we put apartments or something down there? Well, again, based on what the site was previously used for, to try to overexcavate in that area, you're going to start digging up problems. The goal is to clean up with what's there and leave the site pretty much at the elevation it's at, other than whatever grading is needed to get the site to properly drain.
So now, the aggregate, or the concrete that's going to be broken up, is that going to stay onsite, or is it going to be sold off as aggregate?
Our goal is to use as much of it onsite as we need, and again, there is a lot of concrete down there, but for the roadway from north to south, again, we're talking about a property that is over, well, it goes from 16th to 13th in terms of east-west, and it goes from Ames down to Locust from north-south, it is a large site. And to have trailer storage or those things where you need aggregate on the ground and gravel, that is going to use a lot of that product.
Are there certain things or techniques that you can do when you're crushing concrete to minimize the dust that's floating around?
You bet. I won't claim to be an expert on it, but I know Martin Marietta has a number of gravel mining operations that pop up regularly, and I'm on a planning commission down in Sarpy, and one of the questions that comes up whenever we get those requests for CUPs and SUPs for those is what kind of dust mitigation? And again, there's usually watering mechanisms that, again, as it's being ground, the water keeps the dust down. Similarly, with the roadways, dust mitigation, you run the trailer tanks down there with the waterways to keep things dry. So again, we fully intend to comply with all federal and state law, and believe me, that's a very regulated area, and ideally, our goal is to clean this up from what it currently is and put it back into productive use. I think some of the other questions that we had, again, what will this do positively for the neighborhood? One thing, hopefully, it's going to create jobs. Again, you currently have a site of over 70 acres that has just been used basically as a debris bin and currently continues to be used for trash, and the goal is we're going to have active businesses down there, people coming and going, it'll be secured, and hopefully bring some jobs to that area, and again, ultimately clean up the site, which will be good for everybody. In terms of one of the other questions we had on the fourth generation, I believe Ms. Coleman, what is it we're going to be digging up? Again, our goal is to minimally disturb the site, but there are piles and piles of concrete that we are going to have to take down in order to grind those and get those addressed, but the goal is not to be digging up anything from below to the extent we don't have to, because again, the less we disturb the site, it's our goal is to keep it pretty much in a flat area the way it is for use once it's been cleaned up. Any other questions, Mr. Chair? You think I may be missed along...
Stephen had brought up the bank stability with the trees.
Yep. I don't have the plan for the bank stabilization at this point, but we certainly have no goal to cause the properties that are above us to slide down below us, and as part of what we're doing in terms of the trees and the brush and getting those cleaned up, we'll be working with our engineers and experts as to how to stabilize those banks the best we can. Again, the goal is to get proper drainage on the site, and again, part of the proper drainage is going from top to bottom as well.
Yeah, Stephen, only if somebody, if anybody wants to talk, I've closed the public hearing, so you can only come forward if a board member asks you to come forward.
Stephen Davis, again. This concrete recycling plant would only be temporary until those piles of concrete get taken care of, and then it will be gone.
Again, currently, we have no users for the site that are planning to locate there, but the one thing we know we have to do is, and it'll take probably three years at least, is clean up all the rubble that's there, and that will require a concrete crushing operation.
Temporary one is fine, I'd ask the town...
Did you give your name and address again, please?
Stephen Davis, 3211 North 14th Ave.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
No, that's fine.
I would like the planning commission to really consider hard if they're going to permit a concrete recycling plant, but if they're just going to recycle the mess that Anderson brought in there, yes, I'm for that.
And again, currently, the long-term plans beyond cleanup, they're not known. We don't have tenants for the site, we haven't contemplated selling any pad sites off. Again, if we were to do that, we would come back to this body at some point to get a replat if we were ever going to sell lots or parcel it out. Again, I would go back to my initial comments, 95% of this site is currently heavy industrial, so to the extent that you can have cement crushing operations, cement operations, other things that are maybe of a concern, those are currently allowed uses. So again, we're not asking for more than what's there, we just ask for an opportunity to clean up this site and hope to bring it back into productive use for the city of Omaha. Thank you.
Tom, one last question. Sandra came down here today, I don't know if you can answer this or not, but she was worried about wildlife.
You know, Sandra... You know, Sandra, and I'm going to, I have that note here and I missed it. First of all, the site as it's currently there is probably better for wildlife now than it will be when we're done simply because we are going to clear a lot of the trees and the shrubbery and the things that are growing down below that wildlife naturally comes to. Having said that, the topography you have going from the bottom to the top, you're still going to maintain a number of trees in that area, we're certainly not clear-cutting the site. What's the old Doctor Seuss cartoon where they cut down every tree? We're not going to be doing that. Again, because of the bank stabilization and other reasons, there will be a number of trees that are certainly left there. And I'm sure there'll still be plenty of wildlife on a seventy-acre site, but it will certainly not be the way it is today in terms of the amount of underbrush and things that wildlife probably currently enjoys.
Thank you, Tom.
You bet.
Mr. Egan, come down.
Tom Egan, one zero two two zero F Street Parkway Properties.
I think few business people would probably take on a project like this, and I know that you have the capability, and I applaud you for doing this, I think, I haven't seen the finished product, but certainly it's a huge undertaking with, not without its risks, and I know that your intentions are good. Can you tell us that you'll keep regular hours? So if, I'm only concerned about the noise and the dust and that kind of stuff, but if you'd work with the neighbors and work to, you know, if it's loud, you know, during business hours and limited on the weekends, is that possible?
Yes, it's possible. We're going to keep regular working hours, it'll be from, in the summertime, a little bit earlier, probably seven AM to dark. No, probably till five PM, so just a regular shift of this, the concrete crushing.
Okay, and in your business, you know how to keep the dust down as best you can, and it helps, I'm sure, that you're below the neighborhood?
It does help, but we exist in our manufacturing companies, we exist in environments that are much more highly residential than this, and we do everything within EPA and OSHA requirements to mitigate that dust with machinery, vacuums, water, everything, so it's not something that we could ignore.
Any idea how many employees, once you level the site and say in five years, do you, I guess you don't know what users are going to be there yet?
No, it's hard to say, but it's going to be a flat industrial storage facility, so those jobs would be unknown at this point in time.
We can't get you to build a sports court there?
No, there you go.
Okay. You already got one?
Yeah.
Is that what happened?
Yeah.
Okay, welcome back.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, any other comments or questions from the board? Eric?
Okay, quite a few items that were discussed, I'm not going to go through everything. I just do want to point out and reiterate that, yes, the majority of the site does have HI zoning. They could come in today, probably just plat this administratively into one lot for the areas that are zoned HI, and we wouldn't be here before the planning board or city council for the rezoning change. But for them to maximize all the land that they own, those small portions that are zoned residentially is the primary reason we are here today. That land that is zoned residentially is designated as industrial in the future land use map, so the proposed plat and rezoning is in compliance with the Omaha Master Plan. We did not review any specific operation, any specific operating characteristics, site plans, operating hours. We do not have that information, as I said, they do not have any operators at this time. But as we move forward, you know, all of the city department, all of the applicable, you know, city departments would be involved with the permitting and approvals for this site, including Public Works and Planning and any other applicable jurisdiction, building code requirements, environmental, state, Nebraska Department, environmental quality. We do have certain performance standards in the zoning code that does address noise allowances, and there's certain decibel readings that are measured based on the zoning district of the site and what the adjacent zoning districts are. So there are certain limitations and parameters that are laid out in the zoning code, so they will be subject to those requirements. There are several uses that are allowed in the industrial zoning. We will have to specifically identify what those use types are, whether it's a permitted use. There's a few that could potentially need a conditional or special use permit, and that would have to come back through the planning board and potentially onto city council. But there are quite a few that are permitted uses in HI. We would encourage to keep as many healthy trees as possible. There are buffer yard requirements between industrial zone sites and residential sites. Some of that is due to the grade change, you know, from the residential properties down to the industrial. Sometimes the screening and the buffer yard requirements that the zoning code has in place, sometimes it's difficult to achieve that ultimate desired buffer yard. You know, it's more, it's better suited if sites were on equal grades, but there are buffer yard requirements that will have to be followed. I don't think I have much more than that unless you had any specific questions for me. So I'll read the recommendation report, if you do have questions, just let me know. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning from R four, R five, R seven, and HI to HI. Approval of the preliminary plat subject to compliance with all applicable stormwater management ordinances and policies, and approval of the final plat subject to the condition of preliminary plat approval.
I just want to make one final point of my promotion. I just want to address the neighborhoods, everybody has brought very good concerns to the table here. And I think from a city's perspective, bringing us all together under one parcel and under one zoning, I think is very beneficial. It indicates, which I don't expect to happen, that there would be non-compliance issues. It's a lot, much, I would say, much easier to correct them and hold them accountable. But having said that, you know, we have a respected member of the business community of Omaha who's invested tremendously in this community, and I think with the things that the track record they have in the community, having them being in charge of this property and looking for a better use for the future, I think is going to long-term benefit for the whole neighborhood.
Well said. Egan?
I'll move for the approval of the rezoning from R four, R five, R seven, and HI to HI. Approval of the preliminary plat subject to compliance with all applicable stormwater management ordinances and policies, and approval of the final plat subject to the condition of preliminary plat approval.
Second. I have a motion and a second, Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Magg?
Yes.
Carnes?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Agenda item number six, case C ten dash nineteen dash one seven two, C twelve dash nineteen dash one seven three. Applicant Kiwit Infrastructure Company. I'll wait just a second. Okay, the applicant is Kiwit Infrastructure Company. It was on for consent, on the consent agenda. The request is preliminary and final plat approval of Builders District Two, a minor plat inside city limits with rezoning from DS to CBD. Property is located within an ACI overlay district, location west of Sixteenth and Burt Streets. Are you representing the applicant?
I am.
All right.
Ted Zetman, Nola Companies, two two eight five South Sixty-seventh Street, on behalf of the applicant. We've made a lot of progress in the Builders District that's visible. You've seen the steel structure on the Kiwit Headquarters Building is up to five floors out of the seven. There's also been progress in acquiring properties in the district as contemplated in the redevelopment agreement, and we're here to continue that plating to create those redevelopment sites and continue the redevelopment in the district. We are generally in agreement with the recommendations of the staff report. I do want to note that the first one of the recommendation requires us to coordinate with city staff regarding pedestrian and bicycle access through the vacated Burt Street. And while we are absolutely in agreement that there should be pedestrian and bicycle access through the Builders District, note that Burt Street doesn't exist east of Sixteenth Street, and we would prefer that there be flexibility in that route. There's been some early discussions with planning staff on what that might look like, where it might go, but there isn't a firm plan that's been presented yet as to how that works. And so we think that might be, might be better, might be a better route, we're not sure. So other than that, we request your approval today. I'm here for questions.
Okay, any other proponents that wish to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents that wish to speak? Please give your name and address.
Hi, I'm Julie Harris with Bike Walk Nebraska, nineteen oh five Harney Street. Appreciate your comments about the bicycle and pedestrian connectivity, and that's what I want to touch on briefly here today. This development is fantastic in that it increases the density in this neighborhood, which is great, but we want to make sure that it's very clear that maintaining that connectivity for people biking and walking is crucial, whether it's in this particular project or any project that comes before you. I just wanted to point out very quickly, this is a heat map. Basically, this shows the usage of Burt Street, all of our streets actually, by people on bikes that use Strava, which is an app on their phone that they put on their bikes as they're riding. The wider the line, the more heavily used the street is. And on this map, you can see Burt Street here leading up and up to Benson is our most heavily traveled bike route in the city, based on this map. And we also have data from our recent bike counts that shows not only was it the most highly-used bike route in the bike counts done by the planning department in 2016, the number is basically equal to the daily bikes, number of bikes on the Bob Carey Bridge. So we know that this route is extremely heavily used by data and just anecdotally, so maintaining that connection through for bikes and pedestrians is crucial. And we hope that the developer can work with the city to make sure that that happens.
Julie, why do you think that route is so popular? What creates the popularity of that route?
It connects to downtown, which is a good corridor there for getting biking to work. Connects up to Benson, obviously, which is a great destination and entertainment district. And it's a safe street, it's been designated as a bike route and has been such for, gosh, probably eight years now at least. And it-
Are there bike lanes in that?
There are bike lanes on portions of it, there's different infrastructure on different sections of it. It also serves as a critical connection to bike to the ballpark. So during the College World Series, they parked thousands of bikes, preventing more cars coming downtown, and lots of those folks come right down Burt Street to get on Fahy to park right there by the stadium, so.
Julie, what's the number of bikes that are using that on a daily basis, if you've got that?
Um, I know that during the bike counts in 2016, uh, it doesn't, about two hundred per day is what it says here. And that was in a two, three-day count in 2016.
Now, is that a back and forth on some bikes, or like if they come down that route and then they go home that route, is that?
Yeah, the counts are done for two hours in the morning, two hours in the afternoon, and then on a weekend. It's a pretty scientific model that they use. So yeah, it's a nationally-based model that they use to count those. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie.
So right now, Burt Street doesn't go all the way through, correct? So they're taking that to sixteen?
To probably Sixteenth and then down, or into downtown, or in this case, to north downtown as that becomes more developed. It'll be a critical connection, not to mention Creighton with those kids that live in Gifford Park. I mean, it just serves a lot of functions.
What's the drawback of, you know, right now Sixteenth Street is kind of the connection to either go north or south? What's the drawback of that being Seventeenth Street?
I don't know that there is one necessarily, Sixteenth is a truck route, as I understand it. So that's probably a conflict that we would want to avoid. But at any rate, having the connections and not having to go way out of the way is the most important thing.
Okay, thank you, Julie.
Thank you.
Any other opponents that wish to speak?
Hi there, Jason Kobel, seven two five North Fourteenth Street in downtown. We own the property between Fourteenth and, on Fourteenth, between Mike Fahy and Coming Street. Part of the Saddle Creek Records Development, we've been there for about twelve years. Here on behalf of myself and also the North Downtown organization, you guys did receive a letter that we wrote from North Downtown that is correct, I won't rehash any of that. A couple of things I wanted to personally kind of hone in on. Number one, I don't think closing a street is really a good idea ever, especially in a downtown area that's developing, it's becoming better all the time, obviously. This is going to add so much to it, but I don't feel that the closing of a street is necessary in order to make that happen. That being said, I do see probably the writing on the wall that you guys are probably going to think this is okay. What I worry about is Burt becoming closed all the way down, from, basically from Creighton down to Sixteenth Street. And we've got, really, as Julie said, it's used, a traveled street is gone. And I just don't like to see that in a developing area. In addition to that, we seem to be finding out as a neighborhood, as a property owner, about all of these projects, about this, about moving the truck route over to Fourteenth for a while. We're finding out about all this stuff by construction, street signs, three-hundred-foot property notices, things like this. We want to be, we've been there a long time, we have such a great neighborhood, like we're, we play and work well, very, very well with each other. And it just, it does feel like the development that's coming in is just kind of putting their head down and getting through it. And we're there, we're there to work with people, give ideas. We've been, we've been there since it was, I've been there since I felt like it was blighted and near nothing. There's been people that have been there much longer than me. Other Julie will come up and speak to that after this, but we've been there a long time, we care about it a lot, we live there, we're there all the time. So we welcome the meetings and not finding out about this stuff in notices. I'll leave it at that unless you have any questions. It's the Saddle Creek Records Development, it's got Slowdown Film Streams, Urban Outfitters, all that. It's, yeah, it's on Fourteenth Street between Mike Fahy and Coming, built in two thousand and seven. Destination? Yep, a lot of bikes.
Scooters?
Way too many.
But they're coming.
Yes, very well-traveled area, gets better every day.
Any complaints about the bike access to your destination?
Um, no, I wouldn't say there's complaints about it. I think there's probably complaints, you can dig in as far as you want and get complaints about the transportation of the whole area, and it could be thought out better, it could be better. Biking on Coming is extremely dangerous, you know, I hear that, I see that, I drive down Coming.
Driving on Coming is completely.
Yeah, I drive down Coming every day, I see bikes going in the lane, that's crazy man's gig to me, but it happens. So Burt fills that purpose once you get down that far, for sure.
Are you supportive of the Kiwit?
Oh, beyond supportive, yeah, yeah, they're great, yeah, great. I mean, like, my point is, I'd like to know them better, I think our whole neighborhood would like to know them better. What, you know, it looks great, what they've done so far is great with the training center. New building, it looks like it's going to be fantastic from the renderings, more stuff around it. It's all great, great news for the neighborhood.
You bet.
I just want everything to be done as smart as we can and just make sure that we're happy, holding hands together for the future.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Jason.
Any other opponents that wish to speak?
Julie Prescott, Burgess, I live at seventeen oh nine Coming, and my family owns the property from seventeen oh nine to seventeen twenty-one Coming. Have a great rooftop deck that looks over Burt Street, and we sit up there in the afternoons and marvel at the life in that neighborhood, including the excitement of the College World Series, the Summer Arts Festival, which was down near the ballpark this summer, the fireworks on New Year's Eve, there's a lot that happens down in that part of the city, and especially on Burt Street. I don't want to be anti-development, but I, as I say, I live, I make my living there. I live there with my husband and my handicapped sister, and we ourselves walk Burt Street, we bike Burt Street. I pushed Jenna's wheelchair down Burt Street, and contrary to popular opinion, it does exist east of Sixteenth Street. It's just closed right now for building the Kiwit property. We've walked through there many times on our way over to the Cambria Hotel, they're a good customer. Jason's business is a good- Jason's Business is a good customer of ours, and we try to be good neighbors down there. We feel like this is one of those things that sort of hits us out of the blue. We didn't realize until we read the really tiny, tiny print on the 300-foot notice that we got in the mail last week, that the purpose of this was to vacate that block of Burt Street. And my feeling is, as Jason said, if we vacate this block of Burt Street, it will not exist east of 16th Street, and it won't exist west of 16th Street either, as Creighton continues to develop their athletic fields, at least that's what their current master plan shows that as. So, my, that's my concern is, it, it also is the overflow vehicular traffic lane for Coming Street. When people are leaving events at TD Ameritrade, or CHI Health Center, or any big event that's happening down there, to avoid the heavy traffic on Coming Street, they'll travel on Burt, and they'll also go, you know, to Chicago or Cass or Webster farther to the south. This plant is, is actually going to push enough extra traffic onto Coming Street that they'll have to put a traffic light in at 17th and Coming, which is probably overdue, but that's, that's our block, and we know that the traffic will back up in front of our home. It is right now with the construction project that's going on down there now anyway. And so, those are my concerns, they're expressed by Jason, they're expressed by Julie. What happens to the people who live and work and exist down there every day, it's a change of life for us. So, that's kind of a selfish request. But what I wanted to close with was, a couple of years ago, at our annual neighborhood meeting that happens before the College World Series, because obviously ours is a neighborhood that has to prepare for tens of thousands of extra bodies down there for those 10 wonderful days that Omaha celebrates every year. Julie Wellen-Ziganbine from the Peter Keywit Foundation, representing Future Forward, explained to us that with his dying breath, Peter Keywit expressed regret for blocking 16th Street at Capitol Avenue to put a hotel there. And what that did to the north side of the downtown area all those years ago, and which it's still recovering from. Great people like Jason and Saddle Creek Records have invested a lot of money. Future Forward has created The Makerhood, which hosted the Hush Fest this weekend and brought even more people down there. So, that was cutting one block off in our city, the ramifications that it's had for decades. People in North Omaha will tell you how devastated they were by that. My city councilman, Ben Gray, would agree with me on that point. So this is now another block, and it may seem just like one block, but blocking off one block from a city that's pretty well-laid out down there, I think is probably a mistake. I think developers are very imaginative and creative people. It also seems to me they can color within the lines, and I think the lines are pretty definite by the streets that were platted out in the early days of our city, some of which still exist and work in the way they were meant to work because of work of people like you. So, that's all I had to say. I hope you would listen to us, I hope you would give some consideration to letting this go, feeling like the dominoes will just fall farther to the west.
You know, you bring up, you brought up a great point that I never thought of.
Thank you.
And that, and that is shutting off that access to 16th Street there. Because I remember when that happened, I'm that old, all right? I remember when that happened, and I always thought, this is really a dumb idea at the time. Now, I'm not saying that this is a dumb idea either. In fact, I'm going to ask Public Works to come out and, come up and explain why, why they think it's, it's necessary to block off this street. But that's a great point that you brought, because you need a flow of traffic, right? For access points. And, but that was a very good point, and I appreciate you mentioning that, and I just wanted to make that statement. So, with that, I'm going to, at some point, I'll ask Public Works to come out and just explain why they, they think it's important to block off that.
What's your business on that street?
Automatic printing company, and we are open, even though we're not shown on many maps of the city these days.
What do, what do you guys do? Understand printing?
We print things, anything you need on paper, including political documents, and we're a union shop, so.
You got it. Nice commercial.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other opponents that wish to speak?
Hi, Ben Swan, 3515 Hawthorne, and I'm a huge fan of Keywit, thankful that you're moving your headquarters into the heart of our city. I sold one of the lots that was assembled as part of this process to Keywit, so I'm a big fan of that development. But creating the logic that there's already one long block there, creating another long block is just flawed logic. Like, that's just saying that it's already bad that Burt Street's cut east of 15th, so it's, it's just going to make it worse to stop it at 16th. That is a, it is a safe street for non-vehicular traffic that runs parallel to Coming, and it's signaled at 16th and Coming. So if you cut it off at 17th, you don't have a signaled intersection at 17th and Coming. And so, that pedestrian traffic around the events that are so critical to the success of that area, and the bicycle traffic from Creighton University and from area employers is just going to have nowhere to go at 17th and Coming. If, and if we want to have 16th be connected between that near-north development that's going on there with our downtown core, at least up to Capitol Street, then we can't stop that pedestrian and bicycle intersection from being a part of that connectedness. The City of Omaha master plan transportation element, you know, talks about an increase in connectedness, along with that increased intensity, and we're creating a corporate island that everybody else is going to have to circulate around. And a lot of those are one-way streets, and so that circulation is going to be really inconvenient, and there's going to be people that are making more decisions on foot and on bike and in a car that are just going to increase the amount of non, non-functional traffic flow because of this. And so, just, just because 15th is cut off at Burt Street doesn't mean like, let's just go ahead and magnify that problem by cutting it off at 16th Street. That's, I'm a supporter of the Keywit development, but this is not a good idea for the future. It's, it's going to inhibit adjacent development, and it's going to inhibit retail, it's going to inhibit attracting millennial employees who want a connected infrastructure and a livable downtown core, and I just think that it's, there's other ways to do it.
You know, we've heard a lot, a lot of testimony from millennials on this board for, for a variety of different reasons, and particularly with the Blackstone District area. And a lot of those arguments that they make, because we don't worry about parking and traffic flow and everything, but they're walkers, they like to walk to their destination. And, and that may be true, you got a lot of Creighton students, obviously, in this area that, that live in that area. And so, you know, I don't, I'm, I'm not a millennial, obviously, so I don't, I can't pretend how to behave like a millennial, but if, if that's their, their behavior is like to walk to their destinations, or, I don't know that two blocks makes, makes a big difference there. It might, but I don't know that it would make a big difference to them.
I, I think for me, the biggest thing is, if you want to go north on 16th to a developed area, then if you go down Burt Street, you've got no way to get north of Coming that's safe.
So it's just that one block really there?
I think it's a critical block, yeah. It, it is, it is a very critical block. And not just as a millennial, but as a Creighton student, as an employer, as somebody who's trying to draw retail traffic and other commerce besides the corporate headquarters, which is wonderful. It's just, it, it takes away from all those other aspects of building a connected, healthy city there.
You a retail business?
Uh, I had a retail business next to Jason's development for five years, and I was a little before my time there. The area has, has developed a lot since then. I'm up on 24th and Harney in an area that has got a lot of what the planning department calls long blocks, and those long blocks are problems for developing the areas.
Do you see that area going forward as a strong retail area?
I think that if we severed existing connections, we take away possibilities. So I, I'm not here to predict the future of what that would be, but I do know that it will remove options for other developers, and it'll remove options for our citizens and our tourists that come to our city. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thanks, thanks.
Thank you. Any other opponents that wish to speak? Are there any other ones that, yeah, are there any other opponents that are going to speak today? Okay, this would be the last one.
Hi, Benny Foltz, 1144 North 11th Street. I'm a board member of Bike Walk Nebraska with Julie, cycling safety instructor, a regular bike commuter and bike rider, and I'm the deputy director of Heartland Bike Share. We operate Heartland B-Cycle. We're a 501(c)(3) nonprofit that's been based out of North Downtown since 2014, right in, in opposition of the proposed plan. As a person with deep roots in North Downtown, thrilled with the investment being made by the developers in the neighborhood. However, at the same time, we run the only platinum-friendly, bicycle-friendly business in the state, and currently, all six of our employees ride to work and ride to and from work and for fun. Some ride every day, some ride a few times a week, but every single one of us rides through this intersection when accessing our office. On a personal note, I ride through the intersection a fair amount, so I would hate to see it closed. The proposed plan severs the connection between Burt and 16th, which are two vital bike arteries in our community. Approving the street vacation as planned without any accommodation for cyclists and pedestrians will harm our community, new developments north of Coming, and make daily life less safe for numerous individuals. Unfortunately, the proposed plan hurts transportation options, does not demonstrate to the millennials that we value cyclists and pedestrians, and is an investment that hurts our transportation network. So I'd urge you, the board, to not approve until it takes into account our transportation needs of all.
Do cyclists like to drive a little bit farther?
Pardon?
Isn't bicycling and enjoying bicycling is all about is to just go a little bit farther?
That, that is certainly one way of looking at it. I ride, I'm, I'm more of a commuter, so when I leave, I'm looking to get to work, not usually.
How, how far out of the way are we talking for pedestrians and bike? Is it, is it 500 yards?
Well, with what staff is proposing, that there'd be pedestrian and bike access through the vacated Burt Street, so.
So it's going to be?
Our recommendations would.
So you're okay with it as long as they keep their?
As long as we can ride our bikes and walk through there safely.
Okay.
Yeah, with ease.
What's your route right now? You take Burt to?
My personal route?
Yeah.
Yeah, if I'm on Burt Street, I'll cut over at 16th then.
Down to Mike Fahy or up to, or north across Coming?
Yeah, in the mornings, it's pretty busy, so I kind of just flow with traffic, you know?
Have you ever hit a pedestrian?
Pardon?
Have you ever hit a pedestrian when you're riding your bike?
Negative.
Oh, good.
Okay.
Thank you. I think that was, was that it for the opponents?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no others, I'm going to close the public hearing. Ted, did you want to come up?
Thank you.
And address whatever you wanted to address?
Sure. Ted Zetsman, 2285 South 67th Street. So, I just want to point out that what, the piece that we're talking about is this section right here. And contrary, Burt Street doesn't, you know, TD Ameritrade is on vacated, as is the Saddle Creek Records is on vacated Burt Street, Cambria Hotel, the Keywit parking garage. It doesn't really go anywhere. And I think Julie's heat map, which was very interesting, actually shows everybody coming to the hotline, coming down Burt and then going down 17th Street. That's where the majority of the bicycle traffic was actually, according to her map, going.
Did they have the application?
If they have the application.
That's only the people with the application.
True.
Because I haven't got the application.
That's the only data, I guess, that we have.
Because I don't ride a bike, but.
Which way do you ride there?
I need air in my tires.
So, just want to keep that, I think we should keep that in, in perspective of, you know, successful development blocks and what they consist of, and we're trying to do the same here.
You don't see any problem, Ted, of, of being able to keep that connection up with pedestrians?
I, we don't have a problem with the connection, we just don't know that that's necessarily the best place. It doesn't actually appear that that's where the majority of the traffic is going, and we think there's probably better cycle solutions than the improvements that are there. We've seen some much more robust and interesting, and we've had heard, not necessarily in terms of this project, but other projects or around the city, what they want to do for cycle tracks, and it sounds real interesting, but that's not necessarily it.
And, and, you know, it's always been, since we were young, you were young.
Once.
This is in no way should be compared to cutting off 16th Street. This is, this is a different, a different case and a whole different area, so to speak. But, but I think all the comments and concerns are, are valid, so it's good that everybody's taking part in this discussion.
I would mention also, there is a traffic, updated traffic study, and it doesn't show any negative, we do have a traffic engineer, if you would like to hear him speak as well. I think there is a recommendation for a signal at 17th and Coming at full buildout at some time in the future, 2025, I believe it is, but it doesn't show any negative impacts currently because it really doesn't go anywhere.
Okay, thank you.
Ted, can you, can you just explain what the rationale is for closing the street?
Creating the development blocks that we, that we would need to, the redevelopment of that area.
Because you want to build on that particular land?
Correct.
That is currently Burt Street?
Correct, adds all the blocks to the east I've done.
But maintaining a pedestrian and?
I think that there's, we would, I think, we think that there should be pedestrian bicycle connectivity through there. We don't know if it's exactly on the Burt Street or where it should be, and so we feel like it's constrained without necessarily a plan as to where it would be, and if it's even the best place for it.
Okay, I thought it was on Burt Street.
I'm not sure what you mean by the best, you're not sure if it's the best place for it, if the city's requiring that there's some?
The city is requesting, and that's what we're saying, is that we don't know that that's necessarily the best place. A lot of the traffic is going down 17th. Fahy is the new spine. That's where a lot of this happens, that's where the bike and pedestrian, that's, that's the way this thing lays out from TD Ameritrade going west.
Are you able to bike through then Fahy? Is there, is it bike-friendly on the north side of Morrison Stadium right there then as you continue to go past? I don't know if that's a question for you or?
That'd be a question for, I don't know, for Creighton. I know, they do use Burt Street currently, but I, you know, Creighton's got a whole bunch of other plans that I'm not, you know, that are not part of this.
Okay, thank you, Ted. Any additional comments or questions from the board?
Can I just ask Public Works to?
Sure.
Yeah.
Ryan Haas with the Public Works Department.
Ryan, just, just a question, you know, I don't, I'm not necessarily opposed to it, but, but just to maybe answer some of the questions or concerns people had with regards to blocking off access going west, as these developments might start to come online going west as well. Because it is already terminated at, at 16th Street anyway, right?
Yes.
So, you know, we're talking about one or two blocks here. So can you talk about going west and, and what you see maybe as Public Works in that, in the, in the access of Burt Street going west?
Yeah, so, and I guess just for a little bit of background, because it hasn't been mentioned yet, the vacation of Burt between 15th and 16th was agreed to in a redevelopment agreement as approved by city council in 2012 December of last year. So that, that was already approved. As part of that redevelopment agreement, further vacations of Burt Street were at least contemplated, with certain stipulations regarding further evaluation of the impact of each subsequent proposed vacation. So, this is the next one. So it has not been agreed to, but certainly, city staff feels, as, as has been discussed, that pedestrian and bicycle connection is still important through this, on this next block between 16th and 17th. From a traffic standpoint, it's concerning, anytime, any vacation, we, it's done on a case-by-case basis, and in this case, that's why we recommended the submission of a, a traffic study, and we haven't evaluated that yet, it's, it's currently in the evaluation process. So, while that hasn't been agreed to, it, again, that's part of the evaluation here is, is figuring out what exactly is going to happen with not just the new trips that this development will generate, but the rerouted trips resulting from the vacation, a proposed vacation between 16th and 17th. This would be the last.
Did we already cut off the, the truck route from 14th Street as well? I mean, that was, was it 14th Street that was?
There are a lot of discussions right now as far as the, the truck route, and there's several, there are multiple projects that are concerned about it, there's at least one study going on right now. So, I don't have that information right off the top of my head, but, but that's certainly an ongoing discussion with multiple parties. But just to go back with the background in place now, I, I would suggest that any vacation subsequent west of 17th, that would be the last, that's the last connection on Burt Street that doesn't involve a major street, a major arterial street. It does provide a lot of options for, for the local trips, for the interior, for the circulation between North Downtown and, and the Creighton campus. Cutting off anything? Cutting off anything west of Seventeenth from a vehicular standpoint would result in essentially forcing all the trips that would otherwise circulate on local streets where it's most, most appropriate and safest to do so. It would force them all up to Coming Street and just add additional turns and, and conflict points and things that, the case could be made that that's not really necessary because we have the good connection and it kind of flies in the face of all the things that we push for as far as generally, that the master plan pushes for from a connectivity standpoint. So we don't have a proposal yet that, that shows that, we haven't heard of anyone requesting that specifically, vacating west of Seventeenth subject to all these, these same processes, but with a lot of additional concern, given that this, that's the last link between North Downtown and Creighton.
Thanks. Thank you, Ryan. Any additional comments or questions before we hear from Eric?
Eric?
I don't have too much to add. Ryan had mentioned that all improvements identified in the final approved traffic study must be provided. You know, block of Burt Street between Sixteenth and Seventeenth, as has been mentioned multiple times, is part of a signed bike route with dedicated bike lanes and is along a proposed multi-use trail corridor in the city of Omaha master plan. Staff is recommending that the vacation of Burt Street is acceptable, although we, you know, we remain on the condition that, you know, there, there should be a dedicated public bicycle and pedestrian connectivity through the vacated area of Burt Street. Now, that exact location, we can definitely work with the applicant on that specific location, but we think it's very important. The rezoning to, from DS to Central Business District is appropriate for this area. There's already existing ACI overlay in place. So with that being said, unless you have any further questions for me, staff recommends approval of the rezoning from DS to CBD, approval of the preliminary plat subject to the six conditions in the recommendation report, and approval of the final plat subject to the conditions of preliminary plat approval and some middle of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to City Council.
Ted, do we have a motion?
I motion for approval, approval of the rezoning from DS to CBD, approval of the preliminary plat subject to the six conditions in the recommendation report, and approval of the final plat subject to the conditions of the preliminary plat and some middle of an acceptable final subdivision agreement.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote, please?
Karnes?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Maggott?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Moving on, we're gonna take agenda item number nine and twenty-four together, Eric?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Agenda item number nine, KC-12-19-178, applicant James T. Smith, Sr., request preliminary plat approval of Ponca Hills Estates, a subdivision outside city limits with waivers to sections 5384D lot frontage, 5393 street surfacing, and 5399 sidewalks. Property is located within the ED Northern, North Hills Environmental Resources Overlay District. Location, northwest and northern Hills Drive and 66th Street. And agenda item number twenty-four, KC-8-19-188, applicant James T. Smith, Sr., request approval of a special use permit to allow development in the ED North Hills Environmental Resources Overlay District. Location, northwest and northern Hills Drive and 66th Street. May we hear from the applicant?
Good afternoon, Mark Westergaard with E&amp;A Consulting Group, 10909 Mill Valley Road. This piece is in the northern Hills area, north of northern Hills Drive. The street you see along the east side is 66th Street. I should also mention that Jim Smith, who is the owner and the developer, is also here this afternoon. And kind of a thread between a previous project, this, this parcel of ground was purchased by Jim from Virgil Anderson. So, and actually, Virgil Anderson is the, is the neighbor to the, to the west of this property, so. But the proposal before you is an acreage subdivision, seventeen lots on twenty-three acres. They're all a minimum of one acre. They'll be serviced by a public water system, which is supplied by the Papio Missouri River NRD, and then they'll have onsite wastewater treatment systems or septic systems. So the general layout of the site has a cul-de-sac on the north. There really isn't any place to connect that street to, either going to the west or to the north. 66th Street is effectively just serving several acreages to the north and really doesn't have a high probability at all of ever going through. However, Douglas County and, and part of the recommendation from staff is that 66th Street must be paved. It is to the correct grade. Douglas County regraded it several years ago, so it is to the correct grade. It just needs surfacing on it, and we have agreed to do that. And then on the, the lower side, you'll see a street that goes through, and it actually goes through to nowhere, is what it looks like. But in the Smoky Ridge subdivision to the, over on Seventy-second Street and northern Hills Drive, there is a street stubbed out that is in this, this location. And so the idea is that when the Virgil Anderson parcel, if it ever is developed, those two would be connected and there would be a through street there. So it's pretty straightforward. It's very similar to the Smoky Ridge development to the west and the northern Hills Estate development to the, to the south, northern Hills Estates to the south. There are ten conditions that the staff has put on this. We don't have a problem with any of them, we'll work with staff to get them all resolved. So we would request your approval this afternoon.
Thank you. Any other proponents that wish to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents that wish to speak? If you all wish to speak, do you want to come down and sit up front? That'll help things go a little quicker if you plan on speaking.
Richard Scott Camp, 13326 North 66th Street. And my property is along the north side of this whole development. And my main concerns are with the drainage going off this area of the site, off the north end. We currently have a culvert on our property that goes underneath our driveway. And when you, when we have heavy runoff from a heavy rainfall, sometimes that stormwater drainage will run across our driveway and wash out the gravel surface of the driveway and also the soil on the north side of our driveway. And then also, we have a lot of drainage that comes out, comes off the northeast side of this site. And there's a culvert in a ditch, or there's a culvert underneath our driveway that drains a ditch to the south, and that drains off to the north. And the drainage on this site has been washing out the soil down to a depth of about three feet to get down to the level of the culvert. So I think something needs to be done to control the erosion, so it doesn't keep eroding further toward the north to wash out our driveway. And then also, I noticed in their proposal, they're providing some detention basins. Let's see, I have a grading plan here.
There's one right underneath that.
Oh, it's right underneath. They're providing some detention basins to handle the runoff coming from these newly paved streets. And I'm proposing that they do something similar to slow down the drainage that's coming off the north side. Seems like there needs to be some type of detention here, just to slow that down so that it doesn't fill up the area that's just south, or, yeah, south of our driveway. There's also, they also did a similar detention basin down on the south side of the site to handle that problem. And the other concern I, I have is when this whole part of 66th Street is paved, I believe the current development is only going to pave to the south or just north of the new street they're putting in. And we're concerned that it is going to wash out the gravel surface before, after it comes off the end of that paved area. And it could potentially wash out all of our neighbors' access to the north just due to the increased velocity of the runoff and the, the volume of the runoff since there's, but there's more impervious coverage there.
Already getting runoff in that area, right?
Is there already runoff coming?
Yeah, there's already runoff in the drainage ditch along there. And then off this, this corner of their property. That's where we've had the erosion problem with washing out the area. And that, where the area where it washed out keeps moving farther north toward our driveway. And the other concern, they show the buildable areas on these lots. And this lot on the lot number thirteen here comes a lot closer to our property line. And our house is about sixty-eight feet from this, our south property line. So we're concerned about how close that is really getting to, to our house, just to the north. And I'm wondering if they could just have the buildable area be cut off further to the south so it aligns with the other buildable area. I think that's all the concerns that I had at this point. Any of the other neighbors had comments they wanted to make?
Thank you, Richard.
Anybody have questions?
Any other opponents that wish to speak?
Hi, Larry West, 6600 Northern Hills Drive. Looking at this plot, I live just, just to the east of this developed area. And I thought my property was adjacent to this area up here. My concern is that the road itself, northern Hills Drive, it's a two-lane paved road. It's got ten-foot wide lanes, rather narrow shoulders in places. The road is, traffic has picked up substantially over time. It's, it's got multiuses, we've got, you know, people on the street. We've got, we've begun, begun to pick up a lot of cut-through traffic from Highway 75, people wanting to go to the west, and they want to avoid going down to 680 and then coming back up. So they come through our street and usually aren't too careful about speed. We also have a lot of heavy trucks that have started coming through here also, cutting through. We've got just right here, right, I guess, right here, there's a very steep hill. And at the entrance to northern Hills Estate, there's also a very steep hill that's no side distance as you go over the top of it. For our place, it's, it can be very, very scary at times trying to pull out and have a car come over that hill and slow down in time if we're, if we're, you know. Many times, we pulled out and gone to the left, and by the time you got out on the road itself, there's a car right behind you on your bumper. You don't even see it when you first start coming out. The road is also used by a lot of farm equipment. We had a semi loading up hay bales there this last week, sixteen-foot wide load, and you had to go over these hills to leave. So essentially, he took up, took up both lanes, you know, there's no, no traffic spotters for him, anything. Anybody coming over these, these, these hills would, there could, there's a good potential for an accident. We've got the 66th Street, just coming over the hill from our place toward that is a, you know, you have a very short time to see what's going to happen at that intersection. Also, the next hill over right there at northern Hills Estates, traffic coming and going from northern Hills Estates. Right now, there's like forty houses that are all using that, that exit there. Very short side distance for them pulling out. Many times, I've had to slam on my brakes, not knowing whether the person was going to stop or not. It's, I think, I just feel that northern Hills Drive is just inadequate for what we're being asked to be, to be done on it here. This is concentrating more traffic on it. Northern Hills is concent, northern Hills Estates is concentrating traffic on it. Both of these sites, more than likely, are going to double in size in the next few years, depending on how the, the market goes. I really would think, I would like to see some conditions made that the site distancing distances at these hills be improved for this, for these developments, because it's not safe right now. Somebody is going to get hit. Just if somebody comes over the hill and they're not watching, they won't have time to stop when they do notice that somebody coming by. I would strongly, it's, it's just, it just isn't safe the way it is. And now we're, we're talking about doubling, tripling traffic on the street from what it was. And it's just, it's just becoming more and more likely we're going to have some accidents there. I'd like to see that avoided if possible. That's all I have.
Thank you, Larry. Any other opponents that wish to speak?
Yeah, my name is John Roop, and I live at 6610 Northern Hills Drive, which is, let's see if it's going to be up on here, where it says John Roop. And Larry is correct that we have had trouble with the traffic, because these are T intersections. As a matter of fact, when we bought our property, 66th Street went straight to northern Hills Drive. And they had a, a school and some other things back there that use this street. And they were so afraid the kids were going to get killed at this T intersection that they moved it down here and changed the road and actually cut off our, part of our property. But when this road was here, there were no accidents while we lived there. And the month this got finished, there was a tragic accident down here. He, he didn't die, but, so it is, it's a road where, I think the, it's forty miles per hour. But people, when they don't see a sign and there's hills, you can't see that well. And at night, there's, there's a lot of deer and other wildlife in the area. And it's, I mean, we've got one dead deer right in front of our house right now from people flying over the road. I'd like to say I'm not necessarily a proponent. I mean, I don't blame anybody that wants to make money off the land or anything like that. I just think the things need to be addressed. This road starts up here, I don't, you can't see the contour lines, but this is twelve-hundred-and-seventy-two feet above seat level, and it goes down here. It's like twelve-seventy-four, this is a severe grade. And when you put this asphalt road there, this, that water is going to wash right down that road and right across there, and that's going to create problems at that T intersection there. Also, is there anybody from the county here, represent the county? I, did, do you guys, the planning board of the city, design the streets and everything, the pavement for the streets?
We could probably have Public Works answer that question, I'm not sure.
Okay.
They can come up here shortly.
Well, all this land, which was agricultural and they actually had cattle on it, it all drains from this high point right, right in here, all the way down to this street. So all this, you're going to get drained. I suppose they've got a retention pond here, but there's actually a culvert that runs across the road, underneath the road. And you're going to wash this guy's property out, because all of this is going to run down to that little culvert down there. Besides the drainage problems, there's a, I'd like to know where the utilities are coming from. They promised us when they built northern Hills Drive that they were going to have utilities, increase the utilities and everything. But the same old water line that runs down the road was used, utilized, and all they did is increase the pressure on that pipe. And caused us to get a regulator there, but if they do it again to supply seventeen more homes, I don't know. Is the pipe, are the pipes over that many years going to handle the pressure? Electricity, I can see, if they're all electric homes, I guess, there's not a problem with gas or propane. We're, we're propane, we're out in that area that there are. We're, uh, we're propane. We're out in that area that there are no gas lines. So, uh, I know that Northern Hills was close to Seventy-second Street. So they could get a gas line on Seventy-second, but I don't know if these people are going to be required to tie onto that gas line up there or if they're going to have to be on propane. And then phone, and the phone in the area, we were told that we had phone lines and they wanted to take, they want, we have three phone lines and they wanted to take one from us. They said they don't have enough phones in the area. I'm not sure where the phones are going to build a new line in for this one or, uh, what they're going to do. The, uh, the other thing is, I think I heard, um, anthem. Well, I didn't get your name, but said that they were going to pay for this pavement of the streets, but I don't know who's going to maintain it after that. If that's going to be the county, which I believe it will be. What happens when this road, I'm, I'm sure it's going to crumble. This, this street here, uh, this will come downhill to this road. And then, uh, you'll get water from the beginning up here where the asphalt street starts and then all the way to this T-intersection. And I believe it's going to wash over the street at that point. The ditches in, in ours, in front of our house are not very deep. They're probably two feet, uh, V. And I, I know that they've had problems in that area before. I, I know that trucks have been in there and tried to figure out how to get the water out of this because of the water will collect down in this area. So basically those are my concerns.
Okay.
Oh, can I, can I speak?
Yeah, go ahead.
Also, uh, for our area, uh, and when they did the Northern Hills Estates, they promised that, uh, the, the land and the houses would be commensurate with the area. And they came up with a dollar amount, I think between four hundred, five hundred thousand dollars for the house. And then there would be at least two to two and a half acres for each house there. That was never followed. Most of the houses are just a little over an acre to two acres at the Northern Hills Estates. I noticed that all of these are one-acre lots. I don't know what kind of houses they're going to build there. They said there's an area to the east, uh, on Seventy-second Street. That was, uh, I believe it was donated to the Irvington Fire Department. And they built a street in there and they wanted, uh, the firefighters to live on that street. And they just wanted little tiny houses on that street. And I just, I just don't want to see our area depleted anymore with the, uh, cost of these houses being, um, so much lower than ours. Our, uh, so we, we'd like to, pardon?
Stipulation in?
What's that?
Who wrote that stipulation in that you talked about, the size of the properties and the?
Well, they had, he, he had a meeting. Uh, Keith Edquest is partnered in Northern Hills Estates with another guy, Kenny Salz, who owned that whole hundred-acre property.
He owned this land right here?
No, not this. This, this was here before, um, uh, Skidmore, who owned all of this and have sold this piece off to them, had a plan to do this before Edquest came and, and got his plan approved. But they had a meeting at the airport because Keith owns that too and brought everybody in from the area and said that, yes, well, we will do these things. We'll make sure the things are commensurate. We'll make sure that it's two and a half acres. And the house, I will say the houses are very nice. They are commensurate and I have no problem with them. But I, I don't know what that's really going to do when you start, um, decreasing the size of the properties. I mean, it's the tax, evidently the taxes are going to go down. And our place and everybody else is around here, which are, we're probably the smallest place in the area. I mean, everybody around us, these people are multiple acres. I think it's thirty-five people, um, to the east, Larry, there's quite a few in there. And, uh, and then everybody that's, uh, north of this property, all those are at least ten-acre plots going that way. Because at that time when they were built, uh, the county required that you had, well, I think it was ten acres first of all, so you could have a septic system. And then, uh, they cut it to five acres. And now I, I, I think these people are all going to be on septic system. There's nothing about them tying into any sewers or any sewer system. There's a note about a storm sewer system, but I don't see any on the drawings. So.
Thank you, John. I think we got it.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other opponents that wish to speak?
I'm Janet Reine. I live at one-three-two-two-five North Sixty-sixth Street. And that is just up past the Camps driveway, which is just past this map here. Um, and I just, at one point in here, the water goes this way and the other point it goes this way. And the gravel drains all down there and drains into our driveway many times into our, um, the grass in the, uh, you know, next to the road. And I'm digging gravel out of there different times. And I think with having this paved or, um, surfaced, it will just increase that tenfold. I'm concerned. And the county road only goes maybe half again as far and then it ends and goes to private road. So I don't know if, I, I just would like to know what the plans are to address that issue because it will probably get worse. So, um, the other thing I was curious about was where would mailboxes be located? Are they going to be out here on the main road or are they going to be in front of each of the, the homes? And, um, I think that's the main thing. Just, you know, again, the, the county is going to come out here and have gravel, a little portion over here and surface over here. So that's just kind of a, how is that going to work or how are they going to maintain it? So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. Any other opponents?
Hi there. My name is Sarah Roop. I'm John's wife. Live at sixty-six-ten Northern Hills Drive. If this was already covered, you have to forgive me. I didn't hear it. A lot of times when they come in and pave roads, half of that road is expected to be paid for each side. However, this road is of no benefit to us as a whole. And I am hoping to not have to pay for something that is a boon to the developer that we have to pay for. It doesn't seem right. So I wanted to know how that's going to be covered, if they're going to pay for what's going to profit them or whatever, we're going to be stuck with some of that bill.
Hey, thank you. Any other opponents?
There was one thing I forgot to mention. Richard Scott, Camp one-three-three-two-six North Sixty-sixth. The thing I was wondering about is, is there going to be any way that they keep, when they start paving this, are they going to keep our access open twenty-four-seven? Like by doing the west half first and the east half second? Because we, we have to keep working and living here. So I just want to make sure they're going to provide a way for us to get in and out of this neighborhood because that's the only way out is to the south.
Okay, thank you, Richard.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to close the public hearing. Mark, if you want to come up? I think.
I got a long list.
Stormwater drainage maybe is something that you have control over. Do you want to address any other issues?
I'll try and address most of them very quickly. Sorry. I know you've been here for a long time. So the drainage situation is, and we've had this situation in the other acreage developments we've done out here, but we've had rural section roads on the, and this one is proposed to be an urban section road, so it has curb and gutter. So what happens, this, this is the hill right here and the water goes this way and it goes this way from this hill. And this street is going to intercept quite a bit of that water and take it down into the detention basins. I'm not saying there isn't going to be any that has historically gone to the northeast corner, but it is going to be greatly reduced. So, and we had actually proposed on this short piece of street here to have a rural section street. Staff disagreed with that and wants that to be curb and gutter also. So we have some more work to do in that northeast corner to create some sort of detention or post-construction stormwater management feature that will, uh, take care of the problems that, that, uh, Richard was talking about in that northeast corner. So a little work to be done there, but I think we can find something that's satisfactory. And we'll actually make, the, the drainage is actually going to be reduced. The drainage area that's going to that, to that area, to the northeast corner is less now than it was historically. So hopefully that helps. Another item that was mentioned on sixty-sixth street, we did propose to end it at our access. Uh, staff again said you need to go to the property line, so it will go all the way to the north property line. Buildable areas, oh, buildable areas have simply are shown as the setback areas of the side and the rear lots. I, I don't have a problem. We, we've shown an extremely large building envelope there. I don't have a problem reducing that some. The, the building envelopes are very, very large so that the individual lot buyer has the flexibility to do what they want to with the, the siding of the home. There's some discussion about traffic and maybe Ryan wants to comment, maybe he doesn't. But Northern Hills Drive is, is a collector road, even though it's fairly narrow. These seventeen lots will produce traffic. There's no doubt about that. But Northern Hills Drive, although it does have some traffic on it, is nowhere near capacity for a, a collector or even a local street. So, um, I understand the concerns about, um, the site distances. But, uh, as Mr. Roop was talking about, sixty-sixth street used to be right here. And the county actually moved it over to attain better site distance at this location. So while it's not perfect, um, I, I think the county, um, tried to get it as good as they could with what they, with the grades that they had on Northern Hills Drive. And again, we don't have any direct access on the Northern Hills. We just come onto sixty-sixth street and, and use what the, what the county has already approved. Talked about the water a little bit. It is the rural water system that is run by the Papua Missouri River Natural Resource District. Homes will probably be on propane if gas, M U D gas is not available out there at the current time. If it becomes available, I'm sure we'll make use of it, but, but our plans are not to extend it, uh, over to this site. And then phone lines really don't have a whole lot to do with the, uh, applicability of the, of the development. So we'll, we'll take what we can get and what's available out there. As far as the value of the houses, um, you know, I, I don't think the, the size of the lot has much to do with the value of the house. Uh, one-acre lots are what is allowed in the D R zoning. That's the smallest lot that we could have and still have a septic system. But these houses will be similar to what's in Northern Hills Estate and the single house that's currently located in, in Smokey Ridge. So they're, they're, I'm not going to stand up here and, and talk about the, the values that will be here, but they will be, these lots will be i- in the neighborhood of seventy to eighty-five thousand dollars probably in price. And, and oftentimes the price of the land is about twenty percent of the price of the house and you can do the math. So, um, they, they will be very, very nice houses. They're located on a, on a slightly smaller lot being one acre, but one acre is a pretty good-sized lot. Hundred-and-fifty-foot frontage compared to what you see in, in some areas. Mailboxes will probably be gang mailboxes. That, that's what the post office is dictating these days. Maintenance of the road will be done by the county. But the payment of the road is one-hundred percent on the developer. So that, uh, they had some concerns about whether that was going to be assessed to other property owners. It is not. And then the access during paving question, um, yes, we will provide access during paving, whether that's a temporary road or, or some other means, doing it in phases, but that will be provided. So hopefully I've addressed most of those questions. Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions or comments? Eric, did you want to bring, do we need to bring Ryan up for anything?
Okay.
Ryan Haas with the Public Works Department. Uh, just to follow up on a couple of things briefly. This is well below the, the threshold where we require a traffic study. Traffic studies are required generally on projects which generate one hundred or more peak hour trips. Based on the, the national guidelines here, um, on a seventeen-lot, single-family subdivision, it'd be about seventeen peak hour trips in the P M peak. That'd be the worst-case scenario on a given day. Uh, and even then that splits some inbound, some outbound. So, um, the county engineer's office receives and comments on any proposed plat in their jurisdiction. They received this one and, and provided comments and they didn't provide any feedback relating to the site distance on Northern Hills. They had the same comment that we did where, uh, there wouldn't be any permitted access directly from lots one and three, the ones that are but Northern Hills. They would have to take access to the internal street and then use the sixty-sixth street connection to Northern Hills. And then the, the maintenance is something that we'll, we'll have to coordinate a little further with the county on. Um, I, I believe the internal streets are going to be required to be maintained privately by a, an association or, um, and then sixty-sixth street is the one that's maybe up in the air a little bit. I don't know if the county would be willing to maintain that one after it's approved or if that would also be the obligation of the association. But that's something that, uh, we can continue to coordinate with the county on.
Okay. Eric, do you want to take, uh, agenda item number nine first?
Yeah. So this is preliminary plat. There are three proposed subdivision section waivers. Waiver of lot frontage, which is for the storm, um, stormwater detention area in the northwest portion of the site. Staff is acceptable to that. Another is a waiver of sidewalks. Based on the location in the North Hills overlay and the environmental concerns and, and the grades that are in that area, we are acceptable to the waiver of sidewalks. The third one is a waiver for, um, street surfacing, which is a little deceptive that, um, there's several different elements within the, that section. So Mark had touched on it briefly. There is a small, um, portion adjacent to lot seventeen that is a rural section that we are, um, wanting to be curb and gutter with the remainder, uh, or the, the rest of that cul-de-sac street. It's not our intention to have any negative impact on the drainage, um, figures. So, you know, we definitely are going to encourage the applicant, continue to work with us in Public Works. You know, if, if they prove to us that there are, um, you know, mitigating drainage impacts to surround, surrounding properties, we would definitely be acceptable to, um, you know, the best solution to, you know, to, to reduce any potential drainage or runoff. So we're going to recommend denial of that waiver, but we can continue to have those coordinations. If it's determined that the best solution is to have that small section as a rural section, perhaps we can revisit that. You could always, uh, with the final plat, we could have a potential subdivision waiver. Uh, but I'm going to keep the staff recommendation report as it is right now, but it definitely encourage further discussion on that element. Yeah, Mark touched on, uh, the mailbox. Typically they do cluster boxes, but we defer to the post office. I would encourage the applicant to continue to meet with neighbors to make sure to answer all their questions. There is one item that was mistakenly left out of our subdivision, or the subdivision report. So when I get to the recommendation, I am going to add an eleventh condition. And I'm going to read it and you can probably just say, you know, subject, if, if you're amenable, subject to adding the condition as proposed by staff, but it does have to do with the septic systems. So I'm going to add eleventh condition of recommendation to provide a letter of approval from the N D E Q regarding septic systems prior to or with some of the final plat. That is customary whenever there is a septic system that is less than three acres in size. Unfortunately, we just mistakenly left that out. So I apologize, but that is an important component that, that we are recommending to be added. So unless you have further questions, I'm going to recommend approval of the waiver to section fifty-three-eight-four-D for lot frontage for Outlet A. Denial of the waiver to section fifty-three-nine-three, street surfacing. Denial of the waiver to Section Fifty-three, Nine, Three, street surfacing. Approval of the waiver to Section Fifty-three, Nine, Nine, sidewalks. Approval of the preliminary plat, subject to the eleven conditions with the eleventh that I just recommended.
Motion to approve the waiver of Section Fifty-three, Eight, Four D, lot frontage for Outlet A. Denial of the waiver of Section Fifty-three, Nine, Three, for street surfacing. Approval of the waiver of Section Fifty-three, Nine, Nine, for sidewalks. And approval of preliminary plat, subject to the eleven conditions in the staff report.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote, please?
Rose Hacker?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Maggott?
Yes.
Carnes?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Regarding, yeah, okay. Regarding Agenda Item Number Twenty-four, so this is a special use permit to allow the development in the North Hills Environmental Overlay District. Single-family residential uses are permitted in the DR district and can be appropriate at very low densities in this overlay district if particular attention is taken to minimize grading that disrupts steep slopes and unstable slopes in the area. So, we had some discussion about that. I further encourage the applicant, as I mentioned, to meet with the adjacent neighbors, and there are stormwater requirements that they will have to follow with the development. Staff recommends approval of the special use permit, subject to the two conditions in the recommendation report.
I move for approval of the special use permit to allow development in the Edie Northern Hills Environmental Resource District, subject to the following... or the, I'm sorry, the two conditions in the department's recommendation report being met prior to forwarding to City Council for approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote, please?
Pate?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Maggott?
Yes.
Carnes?
Yes.
Rose Hacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
I believe we're on Agenda Item Number Twenty-eight.
I'm recusing.
Okay, let the record show that Chris Carnes is recusing herself and has left the chamber. It's Agenda Item Number Twenty-eight, Case C-Seven-Dash-Eighty-Nine-Dash-Thirty-seven, Applicant Westside Community Schools Foundation, request: Approval of a major amendment to the conditional use permit to allow secondary educational facilities in the R-two district. Location eighty-six oh-one Arbor Street. May we hear from the applicant?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. Michael Coyle, four oh-nine South Seventeenth Street, appearing on behalf of the Westside Community Schools Foundation. With me here today is Ms. Laura Eilif, who's president of the Westside Community Schools Foundation. We're here today on a application for conditional use permit for a sign for the Westside Middle School, and I think it's set forth in the application that we had a benefactor donate an electronic sign to us, and we'd like to put it up at the middle school. If I could direct your attention to the screen here, this is a nineteen-acre tract, and its harbor is on the north side and Center Street is down here at the bottom. Where we propose to put the sign is basically in the middle of the property. And a couple of things to show you, which I think is significant is, is that this is actually the traffic flow pattern for the middle school. And as you can see, where we propose to put the sign is here next to the school because cars come up from Center Street for parents to drop off kids, and even if they come in from Arbor Street in the north, they'll still come around and pull up directly in front of the school. Here's a picture of where the sign will sit, which is right here in front of the middle school. Now, why are we asking you to do this is that, first of all, there's ten elementary schools, and there's only one middle school at Westside, and we built the Performing Arts Center at the middle school a number of years ago. So, we have a lot of the parents from the grade schools who are coming up to take kids up there for band concerts. They also have basketball tournaments and whatnot, and so we want to put the sign here, which is in the middle of the property, of the nineteen-acre tract. I think what's significant about that is for a couple of reasons. Is one, there's not going to be any signage on Center Street. There's not going to be anything flashing. There's not going to be any signage here on Arbor Street to the north, so there won't be anything for any of the residents. The sign is just going to be here to provide information for parents who are dropping their children off for either a band concert or something up at the middle school. I think it's significant is because it's the only middle school that the Westside Community Schools has. We started off with the Zoning Board of Appeals, and then just about a week before the hearing, we learned that we needed to come here for a conditional use permit. When I spoke to a planning board staff, they said that, you know, we're going to... They told us when we filed our application that they would likely recommend denial because they don't do it for middle schools as a matter of course. I don't know if we'll have any opponents here. We spoke to everybody who called us. I don't think we will, but I think what's key about this is that there's not going to be any flashing sign for any parent or for any home that lives nearby. It's just going to be really informational for the parents. So, we'd ask for, notwithstanding the recommendations of my colleagues at the planning board, I'd ask that you consider granting our waiver for conditional use.
Mike?
Yes.
Question for you. How many students in that middle school?
Uh...
It's large.
I'm going to say nine hundred.
Yeah.
So...
Ten elementaries?
Ten elementary schools. This is our only middle school, and Westside only has one high school.
Yeah.
So, that... And again, that's the reason that we're asking for it, and so I think the traditional reasons that make the folks in planning uncomfortable really don't exist here, so...
Will the sign be operated? Maybe you already said this, I'm sorry, but will the sign be operated twenty-four hours a day, or will you shut it off at certain times and turn it back on at certain times? Or how do you plan to operate it?
You know, I think that that's... I think that we'd be willing to do it, anything that's the most... that the neighbors would... I don't anticipate any neighbor is going to be able to even see this, but we'd certainly be willing to listen to any limits on the sign and for informational purposes.
Mr. Inwood, will you... We talked at length in our pre-meeting on this. Can you describe to him the things that you told me that if we go against your fine recommendation? I want to see if he's okay with those issues and make sure he understands. There's some zoning board of appeals issues, and there's some performance standards that if one of us makes a motion to approve this, I want to see if it's okay with you to add that in, if you'd agree to it.
Yeah, so the... Well, I mean, we can get to it after the public hearing, but because you're asking, the section that we referenced is specifically regarding electronic off-premise signage. However, it has certain restrictions or limitations on signage, digital signage, electronic signage, dealing with brightness, image restriction, transition time, noise restriction, size and height. So, I can, you know, I can have the applicant look at that code section.
So, size and height, obviously, we're not going to... You already have the sign.
Yeah, and I think we have to... And in fairness, I think that we still have to go to the zoning board of appeals to get a couple of waivers for that as well.
Okay.
But it's...
So, it's starting with...
That's okay. I'll just elaborate more when we get past the public hearing.
Sure. Okay.
Any other proponents that wish to talk? To speak, I should say? Okay, seeing then, are there any opponents that wish to speak? Seeing then, I'll close the public hearing. Any additional comments, questions from the board?
I just... I feel strongly about this, and not to put you guys in the hot seat, but this is my last request of you as an outgoing board member. As the class president of nineteen eighty-seven, a class of Westside High School, I did not go to the middle school because it didn't exist back then, but I... This is in the middle of campus. It's... There's one junior high. This is a message board for plays and concerts and things like that. It's not... There's no harm done here. I understand why the city, you know, has their policies, and I've always talked about the reason why we exist is for the exceptions, not for the rules, but for the exceptions. And I would ask everybody to vote in favor of this, and when we're done discussing, I'll ask to make the motion to approve it.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Eric?
Okay. Yeah, so typically, staff does not support electronic messaging for primary, middle schools and churches in residential districts. We do usually support them for high schools, based on the size of those campuses, potentially having multiple street frontages, the number of events that is occurring, you know, based on the large number of students. So, that's how we've differentiated. We obviously do have a recommendation for denial for the sake of consistency. I do, yeah, we do recognize this is not right up on Arbor Street or right next to a neighboring residential property or right along Center Street, so that's good, but for the sake of consistency, we are recommending denial. That being said, yes, if the planning board was inclined to approve this, it would also proceed to the zoning board of appeals, but because it's a major amendment to the use permit, it needs your permission, basically, to go to the ZBA. There are two waivers, basically, to allow the electronic messaging and then also to the overall sign budget from thirty-two square feet to ninety-five square feet. So, as we discussed in the pre-meeting, if you feel inclined to approve this, I would ask that you add two conditions. Subject to receiving the applicable ZBA waivers would be number one, and then number two, that the sign be subject to Section Fifty-five dash eight fifty-four A through E. And I can go through any of those specific requirements. I don't know if the applicant would like to see a copy of that code. I don't know if you have questions or...
Are any of those have to do with size?
Yes, specifically, letter E, size and height. So, remember, this is technically for electronic off-premise signs, but it's the same idea. Size and height. The size and height requirements of the electronic off-premise sign must comply with the current regulations as indicated in each applicable zoning district. I don't think there's... I don't think there's anything in these sections that would cause any concerns, you know, that... I will touch on, you know, while we're, I guess, going into them at length, you know, image restriction. There's a part that says each image shown must be static and not contain any type of motion, animation, scrolling a text or sequential displays designed to appear as such. We're trying to prevent flashing images, things like that, that can be distracting usually to vehicular traffic. Transition time, there's a section about... Man, I don't see it. I think there's a duration of ten seconds. I lost it, though, so...
Go ahead. I'll defer to my colleague and friend, Mike Pate, who may represent another school district, but yet is going to put aside his competitive differences for the good of all students and...
You know what I'm going to do. Just shut up, he might...
Just one thing to keep in mind, this is a kind of a special request, but Trenton's not going to be here next month, and if we have another request of this, this board's going to have to back up whatever vote we take. I understand it's a special situation, but just keep that in mind. Not saying how to vote, just keep that in mind.
You know, I appreciate that very much, and Mr. Chair, and, you know, very rarely do we make exceptions to rules, but as I've mentioned before, sometimes you've got to... Common sense comes into play a little bit, and since this is right in the middle of campus and not really disturbing the neighborhood in any way, shape or form or traffic at all, I think we've made exceptions before to this on this board. So, with that, I will make a motion to approve the major amendment to the conditional use permit, subject to receiving the application for the ZBA waivers and compliance with Section Fifty-five, Eight fifty-four, the performed standard, Sections A through E.
Second.
Second. Jeez. My last...
We have a motion and a Trenton second.
Can you...
Lisa...
I yield to you.
Okay, second.
Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Rose Hacker?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Maggott?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
No.
Okay, motion approved.
Thank you. Appreciate your time, thank you.
Okay. Let the record show that Chris Carnes has rejoined the meeting. I think we're on our last agenda item, number thirty-two. It was on consent for layover. It was pulled off. It's Case C-seven dash nineteen dash one five six, applicant Fairway Stores, Inc., request approval of a conditional use permit to allow food sales general in the LC district. Location northeast one hundred and thirty-second and Fort Streets. Good evening, the applicant.
Good afternoon. My name is Mark Klinker. I am representing the owner of the property at this point.
Okay.
Good afternoon to the board. Mr. Maggott, congratulations. Thank you for your service. Thank all of you for your service. I enjoy your program on Saturday mornings and...
Nice to see you.
Yeah. And we shared a lunch once at the CRE deal, so... Anyway, I know that I know I'm kind of swimming upstream here, but winter is coming, and I would just as soon see if... At least I'm going to stand here, I'm going to ask. I'm going to be able to tell my client, who is me, that I asked. The request is... The report that we got from staff recommends the layover in order to give the applicant, who is Fairway Stores, the opportunity to add additional things, which are all there laid out in the analysis that you receive on this project. My pitch, I guess, is that, you know, this is a question between a zoning that allows limited grocery stores and a zoning that allows, you know, or food sales general, and the next highest use would allow this. This would be permitted as right, as a right, and it would seem to me, and I could be wrong about this procedure, but if this was permitted by right, all of the items laid out in this analysis would be handled by city staff as we go along. The... To lay this over for another month, you know, brings us another entire month closer to winter, and we're concerned about being able to grade this fall, so we'd like to get on with it. So, I guess the question or the request I have for this board is to approve the conditional use permit, subject to compliance with the items that are all found in the analysis on page five of the staff's report.
Mark? I totally understand your concern about winter coming and, you know, the shortening of the building season and everything, but how long have you been contemplating doing this? You know, we're in September now, so is there a reason why you haven't started this process sooner?
Well, the truth is, is that in order to move forward with this development at all, we had to solve the traffic access issues, and Ryan has been involved in that. Mr. Fanslaw has been entitled and involved in that. We actually started discussions about this project, not necessarily with Fairway, but discussions toward the development of this piece of property, which is a remnant, with respect to what can really be built on something that's strictly right in, right out off of Fort Street and right in, right out off of one hundred and thirty-second Street. And working through those problems in order to get Fairway comfortable that they could actually build a store there and make a go of it, that is really what has kind of delayed, you know, this project, because until they were satisfied with where the access points were going to be and the understanding that, you know, that those develop... that development of one hundred and thirty-second Street, development of Fort Street are going to be off into the future for a while, they became comfortable with being able to move ahead with this project. So, that's really why we're not here probably two months ago.
Okay, but you've been in dialogue with the different players for quite some time?
Yes. When different players being people...
Fairway, city?
Yes.
You?
Yeah.
Is there additional land to be developed to the north of these two buildings?
Yes, there is. There's about three acres, and that is committed, and that will be back early next year, asking for that to be rezoned R-seven.
Okay.
It's planned for fifty-five-plus senior housing.
I know one of our concerns that the planning staff had was the diagonal parking, the seventy percent diagonal or whatever that we don't allow, is that correct?
That's one of the items, yeah.
That's one of the items. Do you know if the... You're the seller of the land, is that what you are?
Yes.
Okay. So, I don't... I guess the... I guess the... I guess they're not here to answer whether they can straighten the parking out, but there's a... Sounds like there's... The question is, is there enough issues that we have to lay this over, or is there any way that we can say, if you do this, this, and this, then we can vote on it?
Staff's recommendation is that there are several little items that add up to a recommendation for layover. I guess one item to note is that approval of this conditional use permit, if it were approved today, and we are not recommending approval of that, because, you know, we wrote our report up for a layover, and there are... You know, you can't just flip those items for layover and turn it into a condition of approval. I'd be scared there would be items that are missed. But there is still a plat component that is proceeding through the planning board and city council. So currently, this site is a portion of a platted lot. The proposed lot that the Fairway Grocery Store would go on has not been finalized or recorded. So there's not going to be a building permit that would be approved until that's done. Now, you know, I believe that they could work with Public Works on grading permits. That would be allowed now at this time. So I don't see the harm in laying it over. It could come back next month. We give additional time to get revised plans into us. So I believe the deadline for the October Planning Board meeting is Monday. We usually give, you know, until the end of that week for layover cases to get revised plans into us. To me, you know, I'm not comfortable rushing it. We think it should be laid over, you know, due to there's not enough parking stalls that are provided, has the wrong parking angle, there's some additional transparency as a result of the MCC requirements, there's some other landscaping items, internal pedestrian sidewalks, things like that, so...
Do you think you'd get enough information to them by the end of next week?
Oh, I believe so. Kyle Graham is here from Olson.
Kyle Graham with Olson, 2111 South 67th Street. I know, I guess, we've been working with both Ryan and Robert LaRocco to get an acceptable plan put together for this site. I wasn't aware of some of these specific items that you've mentioned in the report, but we can certainly work on all of those. We would be willing to do so if the recommendation were to approve it with those conditions, but if it does get laid over, we'll make sure to get it all updated within the next week or so.
And just to be clear, what you said before, they can apply for a grading permit and get that going without having any of this approved?
We're currently in the process of getting a grading permit, so...
So that's not holding you up? That's a big step. Yeah.
Any other proponents that wish to speak? Seeing then, are there any opponents? Are you an opponent?
Yes.
Okay, come forward, give your name and address, please.
Good evening, afternoon, whatever it is. My name is Corby Crick. I live at 13014 Ogden Circle. I stand on my deck, and I can see Mr. Klinker's property. I've been living there since 2010. The property has never been occupied during my stint as a resident here. I worry a little bit, because my house, while I am on a hill in western... On the hilltop there, his property is higher than mine. I'd be standing out on my deck grilling burgers while my kid plays in the yard, looking at the trash can of a grocery store. This is not something that I think is desirable for me or any of my neighbors that live on Ogden Circle as well, that butts right up against that property. Several of my neighbors, who I believe were here but had to leave due to the long-running meeting here, are gonna have to move fence lines in several feet that were put in there. So they have to move fence lines in. I don't think that this corner needs a grocery store. We've got a Bakers down the street. We've got Target right across from Bakers. We've got a Walmart Neighborhood Market right across from Target. Do we need another grocery store? I don't think we do. I'm sorry to hear that this deal already happened, but I would like to know if Fairway is in fact going to build there, what sort of conditions are going to be put in place? Are they going to be running high-power parking lot lights all the time? What's the traffic pattern going to be like? I have seen, you know, kind of an initial diagram of how the parking lot would be laid out. I'd like to see more renderings of what the store would look like, and what's my view gonna be while I'm out on my deck? Am I looking at the back of a store, or is there going to be some sort of fence constructed there? What are the hours going to be? Are these lights going to be on during the nighttime all the time? Is it going to be less than that? Those are the issues that I want to bring up today.
Just a real quick question for you. When you bought that property, obviously, that was a vacant lot at that time, too.
Yeah, it's been vacant this whole time.
So you had to figure that it was going to be developed commercially at some point, right? Like every major corner is.
Yeah.
So whether it's a grocery store, or an office complex, or a Walmart, I mean, something was gonna go there, right?
Sure, yeah. The initial plans that I saw was something like an assisted-living facility or something like that, not necessarily a grocery store. More people living there, I don't think we'd have a problem with that, but it's commercial traffic that's gonna be there. That's also... That's a very busy intersection now as it is. Putting a grocery store in there is only going to increase that, and we have the same problems that the previous people did with the hill. Between 132nd and 120th Street is a fairly steep hill. There is only one access in and out of the neighborhood there, right there where I'm at, on the hill, so...
So you get off on Fort Street then?
Yeah, off on Fort Street, 129th Street, yeah. I mean, if they want to give me free meat, I... Everybody's got a price, right?
So now we know the real issue.
Thank you.
It seems like there's a pretty good buffer there.
I mean, there's an entire parcel of land there that's undeveloped, and he had mentioned that... Didn't you mention that there's gonna be...
Active senior living.
Active senior living there?
Yes, senior living. There'll be three acres to the north side of the development for senior living, yes.
That's the north side.
Okay, are there any other opponents that wish to speak? Seeing then, I'll close the public hearing. Mark, did you want to...
I just wanted to say one thing, that it has not... It was occupied by my mother until 2012, so... And... What, excuse me?
Did you live in the middle of that?
Yes. And the house was torn down last summer, so...
Did you have all the land in the neighborhood, too?
Yes.
Wow.
I don't tell everybody this, but I've been practicing law for forty-six years, and there's been some file on my desk for this property, not necessarily this property, but the whole quarter section and the section across the street. There's never been a time that... There hasn't been a file on my desk about this property, and this is the end of it.
I understand.
So anyway, I understand your position. I understand why you would lay it over. I, you know, I need to... I wanted to make my pitch.
Thank you.
I spent a very instructive afternoon.
Any additional...
Even a lawyer can learn new tricks.
Any additional comments, questions from the board?
No, I think everybody's got good points, and go ahead.
Eric?
Yeah, so I had mentioned some of the items that we're looking at getting more refined and dialed in on. I definitely think that we're close and that we can get to an area of recommending approval. I do want to point out that the property has been zoned commercially since the mid-1970s. You know, our predecessors didn't do the best job of allowing some interconnectiveness to the adjacent neighborhood, so unfortunately, we can't get a connection to the neighborhood, but it is what it is. So we are recommending layover. As I said, we can continue to work with the applicant, get it back on next month if they're able to get us revised plans, and we're definitely willing to meet with them if we need to or to just continue to coordinate. So staff is recommending layover, the conditional use permit.
Okay, do we have a motion?
...for layover, the conditional use permit to allow food sales...
Sales in general in the LC district.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote?
Pete?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Maggott?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
No.
Carnes?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
I think that was the last item. Do we have a motion for the minutes from last month?
Move to approve...
Pre-meeting, I'm sorry.
Yeah, move to approve the pre-meeting minutes from the August 7, 2019 meeting.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote?
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Maggott?
Yes.
Carnes?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Abstain?
Move to approve the minutes from the Planning Board meeting, August 7, 2019.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote?
Morris?
Yes.
Maggott?
Yes.
Carnes?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes. Do we have a motion?
Motion approved.
Trenton, do you want to make the motion to adjourn?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote?
Maggott?
Yes.
Morris?
Second, guys, yours.
Moore?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Carnes?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.